Now I'm gonna fight him for it.
Okay, very ready to start? Okay, I'll call the regular meeting of the economic planning commission to order. How can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen, here. Commissioner Dels?
Here.
Commissioner Kerapikoff?
Here.
And Chair LePage?
Here. Okay, I want to welcome you all today to our meeting. I have a little business out of the way here. Have to read you something here on the public appearances. Under the Brown Act, public comments for matters on the agenda must relate to the agenda item. And public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to subject matter under the jurisdiction of this legislative body. Hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible. Public comment as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act meeting, that speaker may be muted. So having said that, this is the public comments part of our agenda. Is there anyone here from the audience tonight that would like to speak to the planning commission on any items of municipal concern which are not on our agenda tonight? Nobody in the chamber wants to come up and speak to us? Anybody online? Somebody online? Okay, we'll move on. Are there any announcements from the staff or commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of quick announcements. One, you've all had a chance to meet, but I would ask Shelby to wave at everybody. So Shelby Korman is our new administrative coordinator in the community planning and building department. She is taking over the role that Leah held before. Leah is still with us, as you know, she was promoted a few months back to be assistant planner slash code compliance. So we're really excited to have Shelby. She's got a ton of experience, she's only been here a short while and is already clerking the planning commission and has worked at local municipalities in this capacity before. So we're very lucky to have Shelby here, so I want to welcome her, welcome her aboard.
Welcome Shelby.
And then another thing, just for you and for the public, at your next planning commission meeting, we will be discussing the 2025 calendar. That's something you do at your next meeting is to adopt that calendar. But just a heads up, per usual, we're going to be recommending that the regular meeting of January 8th is canceled, then we do a special meeting the following week on the 15th, that's because of the holiday. And then same thing in February, like we did last year because of the holiday, February 12th, we would not have a planning commission, we would then have it on the 19th. You will have to adopt that, obviously, but we'll be bringing that back to you next month. I just want to give everyone a heads up that we're going to be proposing that again this year. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and usually can be adopted in one motion, but any item that's on the consent agenda, the public may request that it be pulled for further discussion, or any member of the planning commission may also do that. So we have only one item tonight on the consent agenda. This is a design study, which I just lost on my screen. Okay. Yeah, lost, I can't get back here. But anyway, does anybody want this particular design study pulled for any further construction? Anybody in the audience have any questions about it? If not, I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I can second that.
Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerapikoff?
Yes.
And Chair LePage?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Get back here on the... Back to our agenda. Yeah, I know, everything's so slow. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is an orders of business. This is an update and workshop to gather feedback on the draft ordinance for amending the Title 17 relating to the accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Court is pulling up his presentation right now, and I just want to start by saying this is a bit of a long presentation, so thank you for indulging us, but we're very excited about the work. Evan has done a spectacular job over the last many months. If you remember, we did have to take a brief hiatus on working on this ordinance because we were down to 50% of our planning staff. But when we did get some staffing help back, and Evan jumped back into this with both feet and both arms, and his head and his whole body, and really tackled this, had a lot of productive meetings with the coastal commission staff, HCD, and we are excited. The upshot of the presentation, not to give a spoiler to the end, is that we feel like we are in a very strong position now after having those meetings with the coastal commission and HCD, that we are going to be able to lean very heavily on our local coastal program, our LCP, to do ADUs in a way that is Carmel. And so Evan's going to get into a lot of that. We'll spare you a lot of technical details, but like I said, it is a longer presentation, so please settle in, and we'll be excited to get your feedback after that presentation. Take it away, Evan.
Thank you, Brandon, for that introduction. All right, so the purpose of this meeting is to gather early feedback on the revised draft of the ADU ordinance. The revised draft incorporates changes made from the previous planning commission workshop, feedback received from HCD, as well as the coastal commission, staff revisions based on information learned throughout this process. This is not intended to be a final draft, and we anticipate additional changes made, as well as more tweaks made as we receive additional feedback from the commission, as well as the community. With this workshop, we are seeking feedback on policy matters, feedback on revisions to the draft, and any additional feedback the commission feels is important to discuss in relation to the revised ordinance. Lastly, this is not a decision-making hearing, we're just listening to your input, and again, this is a workshop, so we're giving an update on the changes we've made, and anything you feel is important to relay back to staff, we're here to listen to you, as well as the community. So for those who may not know, an ADU is a complete independent living facility that provides permanent provisions for eating, sleeping, cooking, and sanitation. ADUs have been referred to as second units, in-law units, granny flats, et cetera, but whatever you call them, they're effectively providing the same amenities as a small house or apartment on the same lot as a primary dwelling. ADUs can come in a number of different shapes and sizes, they can be their own standalone structure, they can be attached to a primary dwelling, they can be converted from an existing structure like a garage, shed, or studio, or a portion of a house, like a basement, can also be converted to an ADU. The state ADU statute also allows for junior accessory dwelling units, or J-ADUs, which are a type of ADU. These units are no more than 500 square feet in size, they include an efficiency kitchen, and are contained entirely within a single-family residence. A J-ADU may include separate bathroom facilities, or they may share a bathroom with the existing single-family residence. And lastly, they are required to maintain owner occupancy in either the J-ADU or the primary dwelling. This is a state requirement, and it's not a local requirement or anything that the city has imposed. ADUs are not tiny homes or RVs, however, manufactured homes can be considered ADUs provided they meet the standards outlined in the health and safety code, in addition to any other requirements of the ADU ordinance. So while the ADU statute requires local jurisdictions to provide for streamlined and ministerial approvals of ADUs, including the granting of certain waivers and exceptions to their development, the city's local coastal program does conflict with the requirements and mandates of the state law in terms of process and requirements of the development standards. ADU law does still apply to cities within the coastal zone, but does not alter or lessen the Coastal Act resource protection policies. Basically, in summary, the city will still need to comply with the Coastal Act, and by extension, the city's local coastal program as provided in the state ADU statute. So from an outside perspective, it may seem like these two state agencies are playing tug-of-war with each other, with the city being caught in the middle of the policy direction. But really, the city, the coastal commission, and HCD are all working together collaboratively to find a balance to help achieve the goals of each agency. Staff has received positive feedback from both the coastal commission, HCD, regarding the direction of the ordinance, and staff is optimistic regarding the measures taken to harmonize the requirements of both agencies. So the coastal zone is the area of the coast requiring special protection to conserve natural resources, manage development, and ensure public access. The city of Carmel-by-the-Sea is located entirely within the coastal, within the boundary of the coastal zone, and has a local coastal program, or LCP, which is a planning document that guides development within the coastal zone. So this is how our LCP is broken down. So it is tiered into a land use plan, which are four elements of our general plan, as well as an implementation plan, which is Title 17, our zoning code. What the ADU ordinance is doing is it is amending part of our zoning code, and we actually might have to dip in and amend a part of our land use and community character element due to some conflicts with some of the policies within there, which were outlined in the staff report. So we definitely are amending our zoning code, and then a potential update to our land use and community character element. So the LCP is further broken down into these four chapters. All these chapters do implement Coastal Act policies. So basically, our LCP was found to be consistent with the Coastal Act through implementing our policies that were adopted back in the early 2000s, when our local coastal program was certified by the coastal commission. And then similarly, we have Title 17, our zoning code, and the following appendices, which together all makes up our local coastal program. So for example, this is the city of Pacifica. You can see the city limits in this red line, and then the coastal zone boundary is this blue line. So the way their ordinance is structured, and this is just specific to their coastal area, they have some language that says, "Nothing in this article shall be construed to supersede, or in any way alter, or lessen the effect or application of the California Coastal Act, or the city's LCP." So what that means is this area to the right of this blue line, they're required to comply with the state statute as proposed, or as written, state law. The area left of the blue line, that's the area within their coastal zone, any ADU development is required to comply with their LCP. So they're in this, you know, interesting area where part of the city has to comply with the state statute, part of it has to comply with their LCP. When you look at us, we're entirely within the coastal zone, so by default, we all have to comply with our LCP. So what's giving us so much review authority? We're really interested in the fact that included in our land use, or I'm sorry, our local coastal program, we have some language that actually designates us as a special community and a highly scenic area for the meaning of the Coastal Act Sections 30251 and 30253, which requires, these are Coastal Act sections, which requires development be visually compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and new development shall do all the following, and there's five criteria, one of which is where appropriate protects special communities and neighborhoods that because of their unique characteristics are popular visitor destination points for recreational uses. So not many coastal cities have this designation. It really is a great tool for us to use in this example, that let us protect what's called a character resource for the purpose of the Coastal Act. We have, this designation lets us protect character resources, which are things like our homes, the trees, the forest, as well as historic resources. So not many other coastal cities have this protection, but we have this designation incorporated into our LCP, so it gives us some additional teeth to really protect our character.
I'm gonna jump in and just put, go back one slide for me if you would, please, and just put a fine point on this. You know, these last couple of slides, we spent a lot of time, or Evan and Evan mostly, but myself too with him, spent a lot of time having these meetings and conversations with the coastal commission and HCD, and sort of proving this point, proving this point over and over again with them, and that's why we came to this today, feeling pretty confident in this. Evan did some amazing research, he went back to staff reports from coastal commission staff in the 80s and 90s that talk about these things, pulled out, showed them their own quotations, so we've kind of skimmed over this, but these last couple of slides really are a large body of work, and although they seem minor, it's really important to where we're going with this ordinance, so we're going to talk about a little bit of being able to control our own destiny with ADUs through the local coastal program.
So one of the topics that came up at our first workshop was the topic of parking. And one of the directives that the planning commission gave was to explore parking, or require parking to the greatest extent feasible. However, we have a provision in the ADU statute, Government Code Section 66322, which states that a local agency shall not impose any parking standards for an accessory dwelling unit in any of the following instances. And that first criteria is where the ADU is located within one-half of one-mile walking distance of public transit. I don't know why they don't just say one-half mile of public transit, but... So we looked at this. This is a map of all the bus stops in town, and this is a map we made of one-half walking mile of all the bus stops in town, and as you can see from the projection, effectively the entire city is within one-half walking mile. So we basically can't require parking for any ADUs, unfortunately.
But wait.
But wait. The coastal commission does require parking to ensure coastal access. So we had previously proposed the coastal access parking area, which was in line with our beach and riparian overlay, the coastal commission appeal jurisdiction, which is shown in the red line. And one thing we overlooked was the, forgive me, I don't recall what the formal name is, but the walkways between San Antonio and scenic. So I recently brought this up to coastal commission staff, and I said, hey, you know, we have these walkways between scenic and San Antonio, you know, these are critical for providing beach access to the surrounding neighborhoods, you know, what do you think about pushing this back? And coastal commission staff was very supportive of this idea, however, they mentioned that, you know, something like this is only bolstered by data, so, you know, even if it's anecdotal, please provide us with something more to support this. So, you know, this is our call to the community, call to the commission. You know, where we can get additional parking is where it's tied to a coastal access issue. So if you would like to see more parking, this is how we need support for it, where it's directly tied to the coast. You know, I asked specifically, I'm like, you know, can we require it downtown? They said, well, you know, it's not, it's supposed to be for beach access. So we can require it near the beach, but again, it has to be specifically tied to providing beach access, and what they want is evidence to support that, and then they'll be able to get behind us. The second topic that was widely discussed, and probably what most everyone's interested in, is the topic of floor area and how we're going to treat that. The draft ordinance proposed strict adherence to the floor area limitations, so that's, you know, the main house plus the ADU cannot exceed the floor area limitations for the site. However, the planning commission gave feedback to explore alternatives, or for an additional allowances adherence to the floor area limitation may be too restrictive. So that's what we did, we believe we found an alternative. I do just want to pause here for a second and briefly discuss coastal development permits, because we will be talking about them quite a bit. So a coastal development permit, or CDP, is the regulatory mechanism by which proposed development in the coastal zone are brought into compliance with Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act, so Chapter 3 discusses development. So the policies applicable to the city of Carmel of the Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act have been incorporated into the city's LCP. So when we're reviewing a coastal development permit, we're basically ensuring that it complies with our LCP. So finding that a CDP is compliant with our LCP means that it's compliant with the Coastal Act for the purpose of what's applicable to the city of Carmel. So the approach we came up with was having three types of ADUs, type 1, type 2, and type 3. Type 1 ADUs would be basically the least impactful on coastal resources, type 3 would be the most impactful on coastal resources, I'll say potentially impactful. So type 1s would be conversions of existing habitable space into an ADU or J-ADU. They would involve no structural change to the primary dwelling, not located within any sensitive coastal area, so not within an overlay district, not on the site of a historic resource, not within the beach parking area. These would be completely exempt from CDP requirements, you just submit a building permit, you're good to go. Type 2s would be for new attached and detached units that comply with the floor area limits for the site. Type 1 units are located in a, that would be located in a sensitive coastal area, so that would be one of those conversion units that may be, you know, is in an ENSHA overlay, or a unit converted from non-habitable space. So a conversion in a garage, for example, the Coastal Act does consider that development, so you would need a coastal development permit for that. Or any unit not specifically classified as a type 3 unit, that would require an administrative coastal development permit, so that would be a coastal development permit that is issued by staff. So on a 4,000-square-foot lot, that would allow the floor area to be up to 1,800 square feet. And then the type 3 unit would be any ADU which is, creates an overage of between, excuse me, creates an overage of the total allowable floor area for the site between 1 and 800 square feet. Any new attached or detached unit located in the, basically the appeal jurisdiction. Any new ADU proposed concurrently and reliant on a new track 2 application. So there would be no more of this, you know, someone proposes an attached unit, and we're saying, hey, ignore the entire, you know, bottom floor of the unit, you're only able to look at the top floor. You know, that's not reasonable. Or any ADU for which the applicant requests a deviation from the adopted applicable design standards. So this would follow our standard review process, think a track 1 major or a track 2 project. This would require an administrative CDP or a standard CDP. So again, think a track 1 major or a track 2 project. So as an example of a track 1 project, this is a real example of someone converting their existing guesthouse into an ADU. They just submitted an application to add a kitchen. That's all it was. They just stuck a kitchen in, submitted a building permit, and that's it. That's a type 1 unit. Similarly, if they wanted to, they could add a J-ADU to the primary dwelling, you just submit a building permit, and that's it. Type 2 unit, this would require an administrative coastal development permit with a building permit, the CDP and building permit could be reviewed concurrently. So this qualifies as a type 2 unit because the ADU is within the allowable floor area. So the allowable floor area is 2,460 square feet, and the floor area with the ADU is just under 2,000, so there's a balance. So there's a balance of 4,065 square feet on this site. In reality, the ADU could be constructed up to 895 square feet and still be within the allowable floor area for the property. Possible coastal development permit considerations are trees. So you see, there are some trees here as well as some topography to manage, but that all would be considered under the CDP. This is another example of a type two unit. This ADU is an attached ADU. The unit was, with the, it's a 400 square foot unit. The total floor area for the site's 1,800, which was the maximum allowed for the site. What's really interesting about this, and I think one of the benefits to highlight about these type two units and streamlining is, so it's all a staff review. You know, it's an administrative coastal development permit, which is really just ensuring that there's no coastal, no impacts to coastal resources. So what that means is trees are being protected, historic resources are being protected, community character is being protected, views are being protected. That is part of what this is. It's not a discretionary review in the sense that, you know, we're saying, you know, you can't have that type of window. The building material needs to match. It's checking boxes. With the type one and types twos, we're proposing objective design guidelines. It's are you adhering to the policies in place, the policies that are already in place to protect our coastal resources? So when you consider this red box, though, anything the size of this red box or larger is going to need a track two design study if we just ignore this proposed ADU behind it. So that's 140 square feet. That needs a track two design study from the Planning Commission. So if we go down this checklist, this is our current practice right now. That requires a preliminary site assessment, which is about $1,500. It's going to require a public hearing, potentially one or two, which is around $6,000, a volume study, and a coastal development permit. So you're looking at about $10,000 in fees and many, many, many months of review. Maybe not many, many, but, you know, a couple.
At least one many.
Yeah, one many. If you do the ADU, you're allowed up to 400 square feet. And all you're looking at is the coastal development permit. You can do up to 400 square feet. So if someone's considering, you know, well, should I do this 140 square foot addition? Or should I do the 400 square foot ADU? You know, I, it seems to me that, you know, the ADU is the streamlined way to go where, you know, it's much cheaper, it cuts down on the process, and we have the benefit of preserving our housing stock and, you know, encouraging housing production at the same Which brings us to type three. So this is for any ADU which creates an overage of the total allowable floor area for the site between 1 and 800 square feet. So there are two kind of sub-tracks within this. So the administrative review and the standard review. So the administrative review would be for ADUs that would receive a, there's an allowance built into this type three review. So for a 4,000 square foot lot, your base floor area is 1,800 square feet. So for the administrative review, there's an allowance of 10%. So this is where we got hung up last time at the first workshop. We basically said, no ADU can exceed 1,800 square feet, which is the floor area limit. So what we did was we built in a 10% allowance that if it's 10% or less above the floor area, it can still be reviewed by staff. But with type threes, they're discretionary. So it's just our standard discretionary review. Think of it again as a track one major. So it's our standard process. We use our residential design guidelines, same process. If it's above 10%, then it would go to Planning Commission as a, effectively a track two. So if we look at this chart down below, this green line indicates that 1,800 square foot limit. So this is all for a 4,000 square foot site. The blue line indicates that 10-foot allowance. So anytime you're below the blue line, these are the scenarios when it would be a staff review. And if you're above the blue line, it becomes a standard review. So you can see there's a variety of different times where maybe here, you have this 800 square foot unit, and it's a administrative review. However, you have this 400 square foot unit here, and it's still a standard review. And it just, it balances out based on the scope of work, the proportion of the work. So nothing is, you know, you aren't precluded from doing a large unit and having it still be a staff level review. It really comes down to what is the scope of work being reviewed and being considered? So for example, these are two projects that came before you as projects associated with track two projects. You know, oftentimes where we tell you, you know, you just can't look at the left side of the house. The garage wasn't included in the ADU, but, you know, we're saying, don't look at the second floor, don't look at the backside of the house. Or, hey, there's an ADU at the rear half of the lot. You just have to accept that and you can't take that into consideration, which really, you know, we're learning and we're understanding with how our LCP is written, you know, that we have a little more say and control over that. The whole site is considered as part of, you know, the proper site planning. So that these types of units would fall under to that type three review. Something really interesting with these counts, I passed around a little table or matrix earlier, but a summary of 40 ADUs. And if you look at that table, there's a count of type threes, and they're broken down to type three B, which were projects that were reviewed with, constructed concurrently, or would be reliant on a project by the Planning Commission. And that's based on the proposed ordinance. That's not necessarily, you know, how things may be played out in real life. But of those type three Bs, there were 17 of them. 16 would have been considered already by the Planning Commission. So it's not too much of a change from, well, it's not really any change from how we're doing things already. All of these projects would have been before you anyway, with the exception of just one. So for a type three unit, this is actually, the one on the screen is the one exception. This is the one project that did not make it before you. And this project did not make it before you because it exceeded the, that 10% allowance by 51 square feet. So to remain either at the administrative review, you know, we could have said hypothetically, you know, reduce the square footage by 51 square feet. Or, you know, you can go to Planning Commission for review. You know, at that point, they might say, you know, I'll make it a little bit bigger because they could propose a unit that's up to 800 square feet. You know, so some of the benefits we're seeing with this approach is our LCP right now says you cannot have a unit that exceeds the base floor area of the unit. The feedback we received at our last workshop was, you know, this is potentially too restrictive. So we find this as a way to harmonize the state statute while using our discretionary review process, which is clearly outlined in our LCP, to protect our coastal resources. You know, we want to maintain community character. We want to maintain our historic resources. We want to maintain our forest character. You know, mass and bulk has continually been brought up with ADUs, protecting views, protecting water quality. All these things are interconnected when we're adding additional mass onto a building So really, you know, we feel that the discretionary review process is the best way to protect these things. We aren't trying to say like, no, you can't do this at all. You know, ADUs are princely permitted uses. We are giving an allowance to pursue an 800 square foot ADU still, but this is the best way to protect these coastal resources and, you know, manage something that is explicitly not allowed in our LCP currently. So the ordinance in practice, there's, you know, a handful of units that have been, I guess, seen as less favorable. So how would the ordinance protect against those units today? So this unit, as proposed, would have been a type two unit. As it was developed, it was less than the allowable floor area. So it would have been type two. When the ADU was developed, there was 2,602 square feet of floor area on the site, whereas the allowed floor area was 2,779 square feet. So it would not have been a type three unit, would not have gone to the Planning Commission, would have been an administrative CDP. However, the draft ordinance has some language that states, "For the purpose of development of other structures on the property, the floor area of an existing ADU shall be counted in the calculation of the property's total lot coverage and floor area ratio." So what that means is that any future development on the site, there would only be 1,000, or sorry, 177 square feet for a future addition, which likely would preclude the applicant from pursuing a future project. So what that means is it likely would discourage the phasing of the project. So what an applicant could do is they could submit a application for a new home and ADU together. They can do a new home and then an ADU. But if they develop an ADU and then a home afterwards, the ADU's already been established. So they couldn't do, they couldn't sequence the projects in that manner. And the reason for that is the state statute says, "A local agency shall not preclude the establishment of an ADU that is at least 800 square feet." So once the ADU's been established, we've already, we've already met our permitting obligation. So in this case, you know, using this as an example, we've met our permitting obligation. We don't need to continue to allow more floor area on the site. So for, so let's say in this example, in this top-left example, the ADU is demolished, but the house has been constructed. They can still proceed with an ADU because we have not met that ADU permitting obligation. So it comes down to the sequencing of events. And when we actually met with the Coastal Commission, we gave this exact example as one of the things we wanted to discuss with them, and they agreed with us on this interpretation. Another tool we have is objective design standards. So with type two units, we are looking into using objective design standards. They aren't currently in the ordinance, but we could include them as metrics, criteria or tests such as true or false statements, counts, measures, ratios, lists, scorecards, benchmarks, or performance measures. We do have a current standard that is not objective, but may be able to be enforced through the CDP review. That is that the accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed with facade materials similar in texture and appearance to the primary dwelling, including but not limited to roofing, siding, and windows and doors. Again, it's not objective, but our LCP and the CDP process may allow some leniency there personally. I think there's better tools that could be used.
I'm going to jump in on that one, too. So if you recall back when you processed our wireless ordinance, we intentionally kept the design standards out of the code. They are a document that live on their own, but they're referenced in the law and the ordinance. That's going to be our suggested approach on this one so that, and the reason for that, that those weren't, that didn't go through the ordinance process for the wireless ordinance, is that when they live outside, the Planning Commission and the City Council can update and amend those design standards faster rather than having to go back through the two ordinance, adoption, Coastal Commission, rigmarole. You all and the City Council and the community have the ability to tailor those design guidelines faster because the ordinance says they are the law, they're just not in the zoning code. So that's going to be our recommended approach, once again, with these objective design standards for ADUs.
And then these are just some examples of objective design standards. So true or false statements, you know, does the home have a front door facing the street? That's true or false? Measures or counts? Ratios, lists? Scorecards? I like the scorecard personally. I think that's an interesting idea. And then benchmarks, performance measures, you know, adhering to Cal Green. So this unit is also a type two unit, less than the maximum allowable floor area. So something that we could, well, that we are requiring is adherence to the setbacks. So this one was developed under subdivision E, which precludes setback requirements provided the unit is 16 feet tall, or, sorry, no, more than 16 feet tall, 800 square feet or less with four foot side and rear setbacks. It is, it does not allow enforcement of the front setback. So with those findings of the Coastal Act, Section 30251, 30253, that was the special community description I provided earlier. We do feel that we have the tools necessary to enforce front setback requirements. As I mentioned earlier, you know, our objective design standards could discuss building placement, orientation, fenestration, color. And then we also have tools regarding tree protection. So there were a number of trees taken out to accommodate this ADU. So a review of the associated CDP would require adherence to the city's tree protection and preservation ordinance. So accessory dwelling units shall conform to the following generally. You know, all requirements of the underlying zoning district, except where modified by the ADU ordinance, such as height, setback, designer view, et cetera. Requirements of any applicable overlay district, archaeological, the environmental sensitivity habitat area, the beach and riparian overlay, the park overlay, downtown conservation district, tree preservation, tree protection requirements, as well as historic preservation requirements. For type two units, so type one units are not on this list because they don't require any type of CDP, it's just a building permit. Type two units, public hearings are, will propose to be waived, and the duties of any board or commission are designated to the, well, not just the planning director, I guess, any director, you know, because, you know, maybe, maybe a type two unit proposes removal of a tree that might go to Forest and Beach Commission, so that would, again, be designated to a director. Type three units, just follow the standard processing procedures as otherwise outlined in the code. So our next steps are to revise the ordinance based on this workshop, any additional Coastal Commission feedback we receive, as well as HCD feedback. And then moving forward, we have two options. We could return for a third workshop, or based on any recommendations received today or through any other feedback, return to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to council. to council. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I'm gonna let the commissioners have their questions first. You'd like to go first? I'm sure we have questions. Go ahead.
All right. That's a lot to digest. So I just want to make sure, I'm sure I'm understanding it, that, all right, if, the 800 square feet, so basically, the state has said that originally, before we got into the coastal commission exceptions, that if someone wants to build an up-to-800-square-foot ADU, it has to be approved administratively, and the planning commission has no say over it in any regard. And now, we are saying that anything that stays within the floor area ratio that's allowed on that site, essentially plus a 10% bonus, is still approved ministerially, but our standard, so, in terms of height and setbacks, our rules apply, not the HCD rules. Yes?
Height, our height applies. Our setbacks apply.
Our setbacks apply?
Yes.
So the four-foot setback that the state has set on, I think that's rare inside, goes back to whatever our setbacks are, which are more?
There, so our, what the ordinance proposes is actually less, and that's for continuity. We can require four feet. We can't require-
Ours is three feet.
Ours is three.
We have a side setback of three feet, but the one that's really important is that front setback of 15.
Right.
Which we, which we can hold, we believe, based on our ordinance.
Thank you. That's really my question.
Yeah.
All right. The exception. You got any questions? I gotta get mine together.
Do you have any questions?
And it's a workshop, so Commissioner Del, so, you know, we can, we can take comments from the community or others, and we can come back to more questions.
I want to get a couple of things cleared up. Okay, so the Department of Housing and Community Development, they, they give their comments. So we have to, our ordinance has to meet their approval for it to be, for us to have it as a resolution. Is that correct? They have the ultimate authority to decide whether or not what we're proposing is going to meet the state requirements for ADU law.
It's an, it's an important question, and it's a bit of a nuanced answer, but the short answer is no. The short answer is, the coastal commission is actually the final say, with respect to adoption of ordinance. And that was something that, through Evan's diligence, just has come to light, like in the last two weeks, week, where we got confirmation from HCD that they, in fact, don't have authority to tell us what to do, because we are totally within the coastal zone. With respect to ADUs, I should say, you know, with respect to ADUs, because of the way that the statute is written.
And this is because, in the ADU statute, they acknowledge that there should be no lessening of standards within the coastal.
Yeah.
So that's the basis of your challenge to their comments, which they gave you, because their comments they gave you took a very hard line.
Correct.
They basically, their premise was that any standard that you put on it is not allowable, because it's in conflict with state law. That's what the comments said.
Right. And then Evan buried them in a mountain of proof that we could do it.
Right. So then, and the basis of our argument is that coastal law supersedes that, based upon that clause that's been repeated over and over again in your, your presentation. So what you've come up with is a creative solution with the type-one, two, and three. And so we're at a point right now where you've had your initial comments from HCD, and now you've come up with a creative solution, which you feel is based upon the fact that we are a coastal community, located completely within the coastal zone, and the fact that the state law for that particular, for ADUs acknowledges that coastal should not be lessened, or I don't know the exact language, but-
Right.
But it takes, it takes precedent over there. The effect of the ADU law should not be to the detriment of the coastal commission, or coastal district law.
That's correct. And one of the nuances, Mr. Sheriff, if I could, is that while HCD is not the ultimate approver of it, they're still, you know, in parlance, are still a responsible agency. So let's say we, we gave them the proverbial middle finger and said we're going to completely outright ban ADUs. They could show up at the coastal commission hearing and, you know, basically fight our ADU ordinance at the coastal commission, which wouldn't be uncommon. So this is why, and, you know, coming out of the planning commission meeting, we have, we have created pathways to really make ADUs easier to do here in the city, if you do them the way that fit in with what we're doing. So we're meeting the spirit of HCD's laws by still allowing and trying to streamline ADUs, both by time and dollars, but doing it in a way that doesn't, as you said, diminish our coastal act. So we feel really confident when we get to the coastal commission, who has already said that they're on board with this, that HCDs really can't say that we're fighting-
And I understand that, and I understand that, because that's how you proposed, you didn't, like you said, you didn't just give them the finger.
Right.
You know, I mean, they kind of gave us the finger on our first.
They have before, and they will again, but yes.
But, you know, so, so this is, this is going to be a kind of a process going between. And then, and then we also have the coastal commission, which also has to review this, if there's any, if it leads to any potential changes in our local coastal plan.
But we've brought the coastal commission staff, including the director and Santa Cruz, along with us all the way, and they've very recently, in the last couple of weeks, given us thumbs up on this exact premise.
Okay, without getting into any deeper, I just wanted to establish what, how the hierarchy of authority is, because-
Thank you.
That, that's seen to me be an important part of this discussion. And, yeah, that was, that was a main question I had before we start the general discussion on this. So-
I've got a couple more.
Okay, go ahead.
So, design standards. So we're going to create objective design standards. Those will apply to type-one, type-two, and type-three-A. That's-
Type-three administrative, that's right.
And those would still be, now-
Actually, I take that back. I'm sorry. Evan, correct me, because I said something wrong.
Just one and two.
Just one and two.
The objective standards apply to one and two. The, our normal design standards apply to type-three. If you're within the 10%, it's ministerial. If it's beyond that, it's planning commission.
Not ministerial. It's still, it's like we treat the track-one design reviews back here. We're still applying, when I say back here, back in the planning department, we're still applying the design guidelines discretionarily when we do those reviews.
But you, you-
But it's administrative, not ministerial. I don't want to confuse that.
It's not a public process.
Correct.
Yeah, let me, I'll define some terms really quickly. Ministerial is a building permit. It's not, it's just submit the permit, building, reviews it, life safety check, setback check, or, no, no setback check even. It's just check the boxes. It's good. Administrative is, it's done at the staff level. There could be some discretion involved, but no public hearing. And then discretionary is our, our standard review process.
But sometimes you will see, the planning commission will see us elevate a staff-level administrative review, because we disagree with an applicant. They, we don't think that the project meets the discretionary design guidelines, and that's when we will elevate it to the planning commission. So that would follow the same path there as well, if an ADU didn't want to play the game.
Okay, that's helpful. Ministerial, administrative, discretionary. The objective design standards, does HCD have to approve those?
No.
Good. All right, on the 800 square feet, the 800 square feet still applies, is what I'm hearing. So if someone came in and is on a track type-three-B, so let's say they, they could build a 2,000-square-foot home by right, that's their FAR, and if they come in with a proposal that's a 2,000-square-foot primary residence, plus an 800-square-foot ADU, they can do that. We can't stop them from doing that, other than because they fail to meet design standards and other-
But bear in mind that-
Trees.
Correct. But bear in mind that because it becomes a discretionary, Evan and I were just talking about this before the meeting, because it becomes a discretionary action, they're not guaranteed 800 square feet at that point. The planning commission could say, "You can't cram an 800-square-foot ADU on this site. We can see, you know, get us down to 600 square feet." And this is one of the, one of the sort of calculations, and thinking through that HCD mindset of, we could either play super-hardball and say, "We're going to say the biggest ADU you can build in Carmel is 500 square feet," kind of make up our own number, or we can take that 800-square-foot number that the state has already blessed and said, you know, "This is what we think is a fair number, and we can then turn that into a discretionary thing, so that we add a public hearing. If it doesn't actually fit our design guidelines and our coastal program, we can bring it down to a size that fits on the site."
Do our site coverage rules still apply? Can we, so, because we've seen ADUs come in, and they, they're blowing out of the water, the site coverage, and we've had to say yes. And do we now have that, you know, site coverage as a tool, again?
So site, site, site coverage or building coverage?
I think you're mixing site coverage with FAR.
I am.
Because ADU isn't, isn't considered site coverage. It's considered FAR.
But if an ADU has a patio off the back, then that patio would be considered site coverage.
That's a site coverage.
Site coverage is site coverage, unless the planning, this is part of the workshop, you know, if the planning commission's like, you know, "We want to do an ADU, let's give them, you know, 10% over for site coverage, because we recognize they're going to need a patio." We can have that conversation and bake that into an ordinance.
That's one of those policies that I mentioned earlier, that we might need to amend in the land use plan, because that, that policy that speaks to limiting floor area also speaks to limiting site coverage. It goes, it talks about, it, the term isn't defined much in the code, so it's escaping me right in this moment. I think it's, it talks about structural coverage. It combines site coverage and building coverage to limit the amount of impervious surface on a building site.
That's where I'm going. It's the impervious surface, and an ADU is-
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Is that.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, do we have, do you have more questions?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna go over a lot of this in the workshop, but I just kind of wanted to get that taken care of. So, all right, so this is, because of the workshop, at this time, I'm going to open up the public for their comments. So speakers can come up to the microphone now and make their comments based upon the proposed ADU
Planning commissioner's staff, Melanie Billig. After sitting and listening to this, I really think you need another workshop, but I think you need a public workshop. I think you need something at Carpenter Hall. You need to advertise it, and you need to tell the public what the heck is going on, because they have no concept of what all of this is about. And I mean, people are sitting out here, glaze over at the amount of information that's just floating out here, as if everyone should just understand it. And people don't. They need time to reflect on it. And Evan, this isn't a criticism, but sometime, somehow, you've got to boil this down to very, very simplistic way of looking at this, and have diagrams on the board about what this is going to do, and show placement of, of ADUs, show placement of houses, because this, what is being proposed, even though you're working very hard with the coastal commission, and we all thank you for that, because the coastal act is the only thing that's going to save this community. And if we don't use it, utilize it to the utmost, we're really going to look like every place else along the coast. And we will stay Carmel if we properly utilize this. So, to cut this short, I think we need to have diagrams of what a 4,000-foot, an 8,000-foot, 6,000-foot lot look like. And then you need to put a maximum house on there, and then you start adding ADUs in different configurations, so that people can visualize this. It's, it's not enough to just be talking in words. You have to be speaking visually as well. And I think people are going to be aghast at how much space they don't have on their 4,000-foot lot to do anything with. And even an 8,000-square-foot lot, which I have, I've tried to visualize how I would put an 800-square-foot ADU on it, and I'm, I mean, I'm left with next to nothing. And everything would be so fractured that trees are like protecting the forest is a joke. So I really would encourage you to do a real workshop, and that's one where there isn't this separation, where we meet and, and have the staff do a real detail, but very, very public-friendly explanation of all of these things. Show us how it's going to work, and then listen to what the public reaction is, which I think will be very interesting. Thanks a million.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, the next speaker, please.
Chuck Nigerian. I'm a Carmel resident. I want to thank the staff for the presentation. It was very informative, and it informed me about a lot of things. And I was pleased to hear that the staff is extremely concerned about the environment, about people's views. That's good to know. One thing I wanted to bring up is, I understand that California has deregulated the California Environmental Quality Act regarding housing, but California cannot deregulate the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. And NEPA applies to federal lands, and I don't believe there's any federal lands in Carmel by the Sea, but it also applies to endangered species that they've identified in their Endangered Species Act. I note that we have 82 special status species in Carmel. 14 are federally listed, threatened, or endangered in terms of the plants, and 12 are federally threatened or endangered, listed as wildlife species. The more ADUs you install and cram into the city, I think the more likely is you're going to impact those species. And I don't know what that level is. I don't know where that starts. I think staff could probably get a handle on that. The state and the city cannot legally violate the Endangered Species Act. I think everybody's forgotten about the federal. I know there's been a lot of work working with the coastal commission, and other agencies, and, and the state, in trying to reason with them. There may be other federal hooks here to help protect what's coming our way. And I'll just note that, I was alarmed when I found out that not only do we have 349 supposedly projects they want to cram in here, we've got, we've got builders' remedy projects on the border. I'm aware of two, potentially. That's, that's alarming. And people need to understand, it's just not 349. It's whatever else they're going to cram in on our borders, builders' remedy or not. So I, I'm of the, of the mind that, you know, AHA staff should be looking at things that could push back effectively and reduce the impact. And these are, these are real, these are real issues. I think that the federal government, the federal agencies maybe need to be communicated with. Anyway, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, please.
Neil Cruz. I've been telling my friends to go easy on staff, because with the state regulations and the LCP regulations and the HCD, staff is spending an enormous amount of time writing all these regulations, and this proves the case. So thank you for the work on this. I'm concerned about a couple of things. Well, I'm going to read here from page 21. "Based on the findings outlined above, the initial draft ordinance prepared by staff sought to achieve strict compliance with the goals, objectives, and policies outlined in the adopted land use plan. A workshop was held with the city's planning commission on November 15, 2023. In respect to this specific matter, the general sentiment was that the floor area limitation was, was too restrictive. The commission was supportive of exploring alternative options-" The commission was supportive of exploring alternative options to allow for additional floor area beyond what may be permitted under the current allow, current LCP. Staff has proposed a pathway which would allow for an additional 800 square feet of floor area, consistent with the state statute, which combines existing processes with the city's LCP to ensure balance of development opportunity and coastal resource protection. There was also a time back in 2002 when the, when the LCP, when the Coastal Commission suggested to the city, in dealing with your site coverage or floor area, why don't you take your 1,800 square feet, which would be what would be allowed on a typical 4,000-square-foot lot? You ought to, you ought to go back on that, you ought to go back to 1,600 square feet to allow for some room for these ADUs. And the city said, no, that's not okay, we're going to hold on to that 1,800 square feet. Thank you very much. I remember also a discussion, this is years ago, I, I don't know how many of you would remember this, I think Michael would remember this, there was a movement in the city of Carmel to increase the size of houses in Carmel. This is a real battle, and the people who wanted to increase the amount of land that could be covered won that battle. I forget where we are at, 1,600 square feet, and then we went to 1,800 or 1,400 to 1,800? I don't remember the exact number. What I'm, what I'm describing is a process of, we're always increasing the amount of ground that we can cover. And there's even references in the LCP to the small area that was originally covered with lamp with the cottages. And then we've already gone beyond that. Well, now we're adding another 800 square feet to it, and consistent also with what Chuck is talking about, we're taking away ground that is, it's not going to be exposed to the rain. That means that we're going to reduce the number of trees that we have in Carmel. There's no way that it's not going to reduce the number of trees, and it's also going to impact roots to an extended degree. So, I am not for the increase in square footage. And I would also like very much to, we need a workshop, you guys, this is very complicated. We've only had since Friday to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Arlene E. G. M. I'd like to strongly support the request and urging of another public workshop, in fact, perhaps more than one, as an interested member of the public. Despite the complexity and even the convolution of what has been presented this evening, it's all very interesting, and I think it's also very important for members of the public to understand exactly all of the complications and the nuances and the attempts to, you know, take steps that benefit the city of Carmel. I, as an interested member of the public, also believe and urge you to allow for an ample public review time of the draft ordinance that you say is not going to be adopted immediately, that it will be subject to a public workshop, but for that to be a meaningful exchange with the public. The format should be along the lines of what Melanie described. But I also urge you to allow for, again, ample public review time. It's not unheard of to allow the public to have 30 days to review a document that's subject to public review and discussion at a workshop. And so, that, to me, is a reasonable period of time, as opposed to the perfunctory 72 advanced hours, that a document this convoluted and complicated and complex to read, that 72 hours advanced time is insufficient by a long stretch. And so, please give serious thought to an ample public review time. I am recommending, suggesting, asking for at least 30 days of public review time for the public to actually read, understand, comprehend, and digest, and be in a position to have a meaningful exchange with you as the decision makers. Thank you.
Okay, before we go into further, I just want to make a comment. This is a workshop, there is no resolution now that is, is being presented to the council or anything. So, there's going to be multiple opportunities for the community to have input on this. I'm sure there's going to be more workshops. So, we're just in a very preliminary phase here. And really, really what staff is presenting us is a model. They have, they have a type one, two, and three. And yes, the state has its 800-square-foot maximum allowance requirement for ADUs, but our position is that we are a coastal community that is completely within the coastal zone. And so, staff has taken our, the limitation of our floor area, which is 1,800 square feet, that's the limitation, and they've come up with two types of proposed review for ADUs, which would limit it to 1,800 square feet. There would be no increase over what our allowable floor area is at this time, but to conform in a, in a sort of a, a compromise way to deal with the HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the state, and this 800 number they've come up with, we've come up with a type three. And they've come up with sort of a discretionary number, a 10% bonus, which maintains the administrative review, is that correct? If you go above that, it's a full discretionary review. So, everybody's in here, every concern, got to hear it, and it's not guaranteed they're going to get the 1,800 square feet. So, that's, that's really the big part of what's being proposed tonight. And so, we'd love to hear your comments about this, because it's a workshop, and I, I understand it's confusing. Probably most of you didn't read the 50 pages of response that staff did, it was a response analysis to the comments from HTC. But that's the gist of it. And it's based upon the argument that we're in a coastal, we're completely a community that's within the coastal zone, so we are controlled by the laws that govern the coastal zones, and our LCP is set up that way. And, and it's just as Neil said, this is because we are identified as a unique area that has unique resources, our, our environment, the beach, the trees. Like Neil said, additional coverage causes problems with runoff. You know, we don't have the opportunity for, you know, water to be absorbed and go down through the soil like it normally would. And so, that's why we have the limitations that are in our coastal, our LCP, to protect this community, and what staff is presenting is a model to do that. So, I just want you to understand that. It seems like people feel like there's pressure here, there's really no pressure, we're going to send them those comments, HCP, see, they're going to bring their comments back, there's going to be multiple, multiple opportunities for review, and if you'd like a different format, rather than we're up here, like the table format, we're more than willing to have that, and if you feel like that's a better way for us to hear your comments in a more casual way, we'll, we'll have that opportunity. So, having said that, let's continue with the public's comments.
Paula Hasdavak. Thanks, Evan, you did a great job, really did. What I would offer to you is, I just stumbled upon this, I didn't come to the meeting tonight to hear about this, because I didn't know what was on here, I came for another reason. So, I think that's the point that people are trying to make, so I think more of a real workshop atmosphere, where we're all sitting around the same table in one big room, might be more effective, and perhaps more advertising so that more people know about this, and more people than just the normal, average people who always show up and speak can give you their input, because I, I think that would be more effective. So, but everything that you've done so far is great, and I would like to see something more in layman's terms that we can all understand. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaker, please.
Hans Booter. Evan, I think you have a beautiful mind, so thank you for putting this together, I think it's actually kind of an elegant solution. My question was actually about the objective design standards, more question for Brandon. What is the process for adding those? My understanding was that the ordinance and the objective design standards were going to be separate and sort of two different pathways with two different approval processes and timelines, and so my question to you is, could you just sort of outline that for us and give us an update on what the timeline might look like for adding the objective design standards?
Yeah, great question. And I don't know, Hans, if you, if you were tracking the wireless ordinance we went through, but we're going to try to follow a very similar process to that. So, the way that worked was, you had the wireless ordinance that was being developed through meetings like this and other community meetings, and when that came, finally came to the planning commission for a recommendation to the city council, because remember, this is going to be an ordinance, and so what the planning commission will ultimately do when it's a formal action is they're going to make a recommendation to the city council on what to do with the ordinance, and hopefully we'll get to a point where everyone says, we recommend approval of something, and then the city council has to, has to review it twice. But at that meeting where the planning commission made their formal recommendation to the city council for the wireless ordinance, the other thing they did was adopt those design guidelines. So, those design guidelines had been being crafted alongside the ordinance as we went, they were also part of the public meeting, so conceivably what we would do now, if we leave today's workshop with an understanding that we like the framework, we like the general approach, then we will start working on drafting objective design guidelines that will dovetail in with this approach. Those will then start to follow the ordinance through whatever public workshops are left to happen, getting comment on those. When they come back to the planning commission in a form that's ready to make a formal recommendation to the city council, the, the planning commission will make the recommendation on the ordinance, which is the zoning code or law, and they will adopt the design guidelines. So, the planning commission has the authority in our code to adopt design guidelines. What we did with the wireless ordinance, because we wanted to make sure the city council was also brought along with that, is the planning commission adopted them, but sent them to the, to the city council alongside the ordinance to just sort of get a second blessing on them. But it's a really good question, Hans, thank you for asking, because that's going to happen very soon, they will start to basically ride along with the ordinance as we go through the process.
Okay, next speaker, please.
I feel like less of a speaker and more of a questioner. First of all, amazing work, staff, to uncover this, to fight for it, present it clearly. I think it's a tremendous accomplishment, which, which basically rests also on the shoulders of prior councils who insisted that we get a local coastal program. So, congratulations to them for this prescience of our current moment. I also want to agree with everyone who said we should have a workshop that's not set up this way, that's clear. And I also want to agree with Neil Cruz, who reminded us of the history of the creep, the, the size creep that we have experienced in this town and fought about prior to my time, this is just things who, you know, those of us who are reading up on our history know, and for all the same reasons that we're going to discuss about this. It's all about the local character. So, when all this great work gets done by staff, I really want to take advantage of it. We have found the magic bullet to protect ourselves. Now, all of you also probably know that I've been very involved with getting housing going. So, to me, it's type one and type two that are relatively uncontroversial, especially because we can combine their subtlety with speed. So, that's what we're looking for, in my view, subtlety and speed, because if they're super subtle, then none of us object, and then we can go ahead and release the, the regulatory part, or at least, you know, we, we have the objective design guides, et cetera. But then when you get to type three, it's a whole different story. So, that's part of what I think we need the, the workshop for. Questions? I'm assuming from what Brandon just said that we would, nothing would happen with this ordinance without the design guidelines being in effect?
That's correct, because the ordinance will have a, just like our wireless ordinance does, there's a part that says, and you're subject to the adopted design guidelines. So, yeah, you're right, you can't have an ordinance until those exist.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask also if it becomes somehow, oh, well, does HCD care whether we go above type two? Are they pushing for it, or was it just kind of a vibe around here during a discussion?
So, one of the things that Evan mentioned in our, our presentation was that at the previous planning commission where ordinance draft number one landed was a hard line, 1,800 square feet total, so you don't get any more than that. The conversation that came out of that workshop, not only from the planning commission, but from members of the public as well, was, hey, let's not totally preclude a little bit more square footage on the site. And so, where, what I was talking about earlier is that we, we went with the 800 number because although HCD doesn't have final approval or denial of our ordinance, they are still a player in the game, and we think if we honor that number, but put some discretionary power in the hands of the folks up here on the dais in the city council to control what that looks and feels like, and maybe bring that number down through the discretionary hearing process, that meets everybody in the middle.
So, one question I had is, and this is, this would be a workshop-able or maybe just staff research-able thing going to the next meeting, is how can we do that without affecting the trees? And the question is, are we willing to make maybe concessions that have to do with attic space or height, or, I don't know, I don't want to throw anything out that would be offensive to me and everyone else, but we are, we need to hide that space if that space is going to be there, I think, and I don't know how to do that without affecting the trees. So, and then there was one other question, sorry. Oh, my understanding from reading separately from what was presented today is that local jurisdictions, and maybe we especially with our protection, are allowed to, to set minimums and maximums of sizes, which I read recent, I read now, looked up several different ways. In other words, above 150 square feet is the legal minimum for a dwelling unit in the state of California, and anything over there defaults to the state unless there's a local ordinance. In other words, we can set an upper limit to the size or a minimum limit.
Yeah, I think that's, we can, we can make that part of the workshop, but I think what you're referring to is actually the building code definition of a habitable space, 150 square feet is what constitutes a livable.
But also ADU law in state of California is my understanding, but I could be wrong, I just don't know.
Yeah, we'll look into that, I'm, I'm pretty sure their number is 800, but yeah.
Right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, next speaker, please. Don't see anybody getting up, is anybody online raising their hand?
We do have one, yes.
Okay. I, I can't see it, so.
We have Linda.
Go ahead, whoever's online, unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hello, this is Linda Smith, here on Lincoln Street, fourth-generation Carmelite. Remembers when Carmel had a lot of trees and a lot of green space in it, and a lot of birds, even banana slugs and native vegetation, and lots of kids playing in it. I'm still on the family property, two and a half lots that are wild. Next door to me, to the south, was purchased seven years ago, and since then, there were, I think, nine or 10 oaks on the property, on that property. Gradually, all of them have died because of sort of abuse to their, you know, being. And in the last year, an ADU went up without any notice or anything. None of the trees that had come down, I think there were about six of them that were taken down with permits, and there was a one that was required to be replanted, it never got replanted. Also, I think an upper canopy tree was required, it never got planted. And now, this 700-square-foot ADU has taken up all the space that trees could have been planted on. And our story is sort of the nightmare story of ADUs. I'd just like to say that I really appreciate a lot of the comments from people in the audience. I have here in front of me a 2002 staff report on the LCP, on Carmel's LCP, recommending improvements to it. And there is a quote here that I wanted to read, because it is this process of attrition, kind of a death, death to Carmel's forest, death to Carmel's character by a thousand cuts. They say, additionally, in an earlier section of this report, it was demonstrated that the current zoning standards for floor area ratio and site coverage were contributing to the erosion of community character through the approval of larger homes relative to the established size and scale of Carmel's small cottages. The current standards allow 1,800 square feet of floor area on a single 4,000-square-foot lot. This is roughly 50% greater in size than the average existing cottage, and has resulted in adverse effects on site coverage setbacks massing in the urban forest. Site coverage for a Site coverage for a single-story residence, including patios, driveways, and walks, could exceed 60% of a 4,000 square foot lot. At this size, homes no longer are subordinate to the natural environment, but rather they become dominant features of the site, often overriding other features such as trees and topography. To remedy this, the commission is recommending that the above-grade floor area ratio be reduced to 1,600 square feet on 4,000 square foot lots and structural coverage limited to 40% of the site. So you can see this battle has been ongoing for many, many years. This is 2002. The city did make changes, but they did not reduce the floor area ratio as, as recommended. And I'm just, you know, concerned, as are other residents, that Carmel's character already eroded, can erode even further if we allow, you know, these large ADUs to take up available space, that trees could grow, that people could have a sense of space, and that Carmel's character would be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else online? That's it. Come on up.
I'll do this stuff very quickly. This is a statute, the ADU. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
It's a statute, the ADU requirement.
It's a state, there is a state statute, yes.
My question is this, we have a, a local LCP. What if the commission listens to, to the public and decides to do a minimum development of the ADU? What teeth does the state have to enforce the ADU? That's my question.
Do you want to comment on that?
I don't know if I fully under, oh, sir, maybe, sir, if you want to come back, I don't, I was going to ask, because I don't, I don't fully understand the question.
What I'm saying is, if Carmel goes against the ADU, not only maximums, but also basically takes into account what we're concerned about, basically, the environmental stuff, the architectural stuff, the harmony of the whole, the whole city. And what we do is basically, we'll de-emphasize the ADU, not eliminate it, but de-emphasize it. And what organizations within the three agencies, such as HCD, et cetera, of course Coastal Commission, what is their recourse basically to force us to do more? In other words, what legal procedures are they going to take against us?
So it's a great question. And I think I'll, I'll start by backing up a little bit. If, if everyone remembers the, the ADU laws when they came out, the 800 square foot number that we're working with now is actually the minimum in the state law. So the state law goes all the way up to 1,200 square feet. So in other bigger jurisdictions that aren't fully protected by the coastal act, you could be looking at being stuck with a mandated 1,200 square foot ADU. So we're already finding ways to bring that down to 800 square feet. But to your, your question of what powers do they have, we feel strongly, and I've said this up here already, that HCD is not the ultimate approver or denier of our ordinance, that's the Coastal Commission. Where HCD has some power, and what the Coastal Commission has guided us to do as well, and Evan used this word multiple times, is to harmonize our regulations with what the state HCD is trying to accomplish with ADUs, which is to increase more housing, more affordable housing, and what the coastal act does, which is protect our resources and our special character of this village. So that's where we're at. We're trying to harmonize that. As far as like, if we're just going to talk about hammers, HCD, our understanding at this point is that HCD can't approve or deny our ordinance, but what they could do is when we go to the coastal commissions, who, who as we understand it, will be the one approving or denying our ordinance, HCD as an agency could show up and say, the city of Carmel is not trying to harmonize this, they're not meeting the spirit of the state law, we recognize that they're in the coastal zone, but we're talking to you, Coastal Commission, as another state agency, saying that this ordinance could go further to try to harmonize itself. So that's where we're at. They don't have any legal recourse to like, you know, turn the lights off or anything.
But that's exactly what would she do. She should actually put the Coastal Commission in between us and HCD. And what will the Coastal Commission do if our arguments are basically more in line with, with the Coastal Commission?
Well, and I think, and this is, you know, all, all the more reason, I think, you know, I agree with the sentiment that we need to have a more, you know, informal workshop to explain some of these things, because I would, I would make the case that the ordinance is attempting to do that already by creating several layers where most of them are, are zero or little impact. And on the ones that are still adding square footage to the site, there's a lot of discretionary review still in there that relies on our coastal act, which, for just one example, the LCP, you have to get a coastal development permit, the CDP that Evan was talking about earlier, they, these guys would have to approve a coastal development permit. And the required findings to approve a coastal development permit means that you have to be compliant with our local coastal program, the LCP, which has language about protecting trees, it has language about protecting resources. So in order to get that type three, the one that's adding square footage to a site, in order to get that one approved, you have to check the boxes and say, okay, I'm, I'm not significantly impacting trees, I'm not doing these things. That's why we're slapping the coastal development permit on those type three ones, because that's our, that's our magic bullet. That's how we protect the villages, through the coastal development permit process, which is put in place by the LCP.
Well, I'll finish on this point.
Yeah.
And that is, I understand what Evan is doing, and, and I, and I truly understand, basically, he's trying to find a harmony between the two. But I think the way you start this game is basically, you have to be very aggressive on the conservative side. Not basically, at the, at the beginning, say, we're going to find basically a plan that everybody agrees on.
And that's a fair point. And I think that point is, you're directing that point at the planning commissioners, because we came, if you recall, we came the first time with the ordinance, we actually took the zero, you know, we're not going over 1,800 square foot period. And then we got policy direction to, let's find a middle ground where we can permit a little bit more over the top. Ultimately, that's going to be a policy decision for the city council, who's going to have to either adopt or not adopt an ordinance that does one thing or the other. But it's, they're great points you're making, and you're clearly tuned into what's going on. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to make some comments? Come on up.
I will be very quick. My name is Hong Sha Liu, and I am a resident. I have learned a lot from the staff, from the commissioner tonight about ADU, but it's more from a technical or legal perspective. So I would like to learn, before we talk about ordinance, before we talk about workshop, what actually drove the city of Carmel to move into this direction that ADU might be needed here? Have we done any survey of our residents that would inform us, this solid data that would inform us, what is the need here? Is it for space? It is for income? I have no idea why we are talking about this ADU. What is the real need here? Because ADU, once you build it, it has impacts. We have talked about environment, we have talked about character, traffic, parking, but also school, whether it's elementary school or high school, there are so many more factors would be impacted. But then, the fundamental question for me is why we are here talking about ADU? What is the data? What is the force that is driving us into this direction? Thank you very much.
You want to, you want to answer that?
No.
Well, I, I think her question, she was asking, why are we here talking about it? And the reason we're here is because there's a state law which is forcing us to talk about it.
Yeah, there's, so it, I was, you know, tongue in cheek saying no, but it's a great question. I mean, that's, it's a wonderful question.
No, I think it's a, I think it's a great question. I want to give her an answer.
Yeah, I think, I think the answer is one fold, what Chair LaPage said, is that there's a state law. Yeah, we're addressing some of those state law requirements by how we're taking the approach. But also, our highest level policy setters in the city, the city council, also are supportive of ADUs in the city. You know, they, they have made the decision through various public workshops, our priorities setting meetings, that ADUs could be a good solution in this city for finding more affordable housing. They, they solidified that, not only through the workshops where they said they want to work on this AD ordinance, but the city council also solidified that through adoption of the housing element, which is, which is an amendment to the general plan, which points to ADUs once again as being one of the parts of the solutions for finding more affordable housing in a place like Carmel by the Sea. So the bigger answer is, are the people that set the policy for where the village is going at the city council level said, this is a priority and it's something we want to do, that dovetails with what Chair LaPage said about the state in the mid 2010, so 2016, 17, 18, 19, towards the end there. They adopted a series of legislation basically saying the same thing, that ADUs are a way to create more housing in a state where there's a housing crisis. And that's, that's the long answer, better than no.
Right. And we're, we're working, we're working under a mandate, a law that, that the state has put in place.
Yeah.
And so the ADUs are a requirement of each community. And what we're, we're trying to do is craft an ordinance which protects the character of this community. So, do we have another speaker?
I think we have a hand up.
Have a hand up online?
Marie Goulet.
Okay, Marie, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a resident of Carmel Valley, and I just have a quick comment or question, which is that I think a lot of people in Carmel by the Sea will be excited to use this opportunity to build a really nice guest house on their vacation home. And I wonder if one way to control the amount of ADUs being built is to provide a way to make sure that the ADUs are actually long-term rentals, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I think that might be, it's just a comment, I believe.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anyone else in the chamber want to follow up on anything? This is, this is an informal workshop, you can come up and, if you've, you've got some more thoughts that kind of developed during this discussion, we'd like to hear it. Okay, I don't see anybody. Does, do the commissioners have any? You want to, you want to, you want to start, Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, sure. So in terms of comments, I'm very, very happy with the direction that Evan and the staff have gone in. I think it's fantastic. I, I think that it is the right direction to go in. At the last workshop, when we talked, there were certain things that I wanted to make sure that the ordinance addressed, and that was, you know, the number of ADUs that can be applied onto a site, floor area, which I'm open to looking at. If, if it's the community's suggestion that we reduce floor area, then I think that that would be something that we would want to talk about. I'm happy that everybody wants another workshop. That sounds like a good idea to bring everyone along in this journey. In terms of some of the other aspects that we talked about in the last workshop, I want the ADU to be subordinate to the house in terms of size. I like the fact that we're looking at height, setbacks, parking, and design standards, and then also landscape and historic impact, or historic resource impact. So, so I want to say that the staff did a fantastic job of addressing those in this. And, and as we start to really dive down into the actual document in a future conversation, I have, you know, just other things about wording and, and things like that, but I, I'm happy with the direction that we're going in.
Mr. Dels?
Yeah. So I think this ordinance, and we really didn't talk about the ordinance itself, is directionally correct. It's absolutely directionally correct in trying to use our status with the Coastal Commission to, to, to protect what we are, and, which to me means pushback against HCD. And, you know, to the woman who asked, why are we here? And I'll just say it, the way I feel about it, is because we have a bloated, out-of-control state government that is pushing down one-size-fits-all unfunded mandates to the cities. And it's not just our city, it's every city. We actually, what I'm encouraged tonight, because we might actually have some protection, maybe, because of our status. And now it's almost like I want to say it too loudly, you know? Because I really, I'm serious about that. It just, I don't want to put a target on our back with HCD. They, they've just tripled the organization in, in creating an enforcement arm. They, they're spending billions of our dollars on trying to get all, all of us to do things that we really may not want to do. They could have just spent those billions of dollars and gone and bought some land, you know? So I digress. I'm not looking for that either. To Melanie's point, I think everybody's point, remember, we're citizens just like you are. And I think we share a lot of your concerns. I've never felt that regular scheduled meetings, whether the city council or, in this case, the planning commission, are really the right venue for really a workshop, because really not, we're not going to start our planning commission meeting at 6:15 instead of at 4 o'clock, and we still have a whole book of, of work to do. I really think this is the type of thing, and you all said it, it should be in a different, it can be in here, but it really probably needs to be in a different room where more people can be there. And it's a much more free, free-flowing type of thing. When, when we do that, Evan, I would recommend like some flow charts, decision trees, that it, it's almost like reverse engineering your ordinance back into a decision tree so that people can understand, you know, if, if it's this, then it's that, and these apply. Otherwise, it's this, and these things apply. And then you have examples, and I, I think we just need to revisit those examples in perhaps a little more user-friendly way, or it's just, maybe they're just fine, and we just need to do it again. But I'm absolutely in support of that. Now that I've seen this, I, I think we, I'm, again, I'm encouraged that if we have a tool to push back, that maybe we do start with zero. And so my input on the, you know, the 10% bonus in the type three is, don't do it. That for type three, if, as soon as you're in type three, you're into the standard path. And I think I was probably suggesting that 10% when we met a year ago, but at the time, I was kind of looking for negotiating room with what I thought was an overbearing, heavy-handed HCD. And now we may, we may have an ally that will help us start with zero. And I really want to understand a lot more about what that means, that, you know, as a planning commissioner, what can I say no to? And future planning commissioners. Yeah, I, I think the gentleman here was suggesting that we might want to pursue a path that has a little less harmony in our harmonizing. And I, at this point, I agree with that. Anything else? I, I've got more specific things just on structure of the ordinance, but I think we can let those go for now.
Thanks. Commissioner Kara Petkoff, your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I, I think this is a very productive workshop. Actually, I really enjoyed the presentation from Evan and the comments from Brandon. I distinctly remember that we had a discussion about Coastal Commission versus Housing Element, maybe in the beginning of 2024 or late 2023. And it may have been about the housing element. And at the time, we were not ready to really play that game with, with the two authorities, but now, now we seem to be in a good position to do that. I, I think that this, it's a wonderful way to solve a problem like that, when you cannot say blank rejection, you split the problem in multiple buckets and you treat them differently. And that's what you did with the type one, two, and three. Type two with a 10% bonus, I think it's consistent with our track one approval process. Type II with a 10% bonus, I think it's consistent with our Track 1 approval process.
Type III with a 10% bonus?
And I think that Type III is the one that goes the full design review. And the truck, the type, isn't Type II the one where you get 10% and staff can review it?
It's Type III-A.
Oh, okay, Type III-A, okay. Okay, whatever the number is, the option to get the 10% bonus and do a staff review, no presentation to the planning commission, is consistent with the way we handle Track 1 requests. So I think that is great, that we can stay within the same definitions. I also like the one thing that you mentioned, where you make the applicant face consequences when they build an ADU, because then, when they need to remodel the main house, the square footage is already limited. So I think that is, it's a difficult message to communicate. I hope that people will understand that, and hopefully the architects will understand that and communicate to their clients. But it's a good way to kind of say, well, you can build it, but there's a consequence. One thing that I didn't hear is this concern we had last time we discussed this big ADU, the one that you had on the pictures here, the modern one, was how do we prevent people from building an ADU in a completely different style, and then go and apply for remodeling the house in the style of the ADU?
So that was, go ahead, Evan.
Yeah, so that would be addressed through the objective design guidelines. So ideally, you know, we, again, this isn't going to be objective in the way I'm describing it, but something along the lines of it needs to match the existing residents. So if you recall back to that photo that was on the slide, it would need to have the same, you know, roof pitch, the same siding. So the ADU that's developed and constructed, it would need, or approved, whether it's constructed or not, it would need to appear effectively the same as the house that's on site. So when that house comes in for its design study, you know, the appearance would need to look the same.
Yeah.
And we've run into that issue on other projects before, where, you know, an applicant will submit a building permit for an ADU that looks like a future project, and then the planning commission is, you know, backed into a corner saying, you know, there's this ADU that's been approved, and now I have to basically approve a project that matches that ADU. And that wouldn't be the case.
And then on the question about why we need to discuss ADUs, I would recommend going back to the recording on YouTube and listening to the conversations or the discussions in city council, maybe in the beginning of this year, when we discussed the housing element, the ADUs. There were some really interesting arguments around all the people needing assistance, somebody on site needs to live in a separate unit and provide assistance. I remember one of the city council members was talking about the fact that none of the three children, of her three children, cannot afford to come back and buy property in Carmel, so an ADU would be a cost-efficient way to bring some of the kids back to the community. And we also had the big discussion around the housing element, about bringing younger people and kind of moving our average age in Carmel from 75 down to something lower. So that is kind of the argument. And finally, there was this proposal that we use the federal government and the Endangered Species Act. It's a wonderful idea, but I think you're already learning, we're going way outside of your scope as a building department now. If we ask you to go study birds and figure out how to protect them in Carmel, that is going to be a very difficult proposition in my mind. So let's stick to the coastal, to the coastal planning commission and the housing department, and try to figure out how to work with them. These are my comments. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. What I've heard here mostly tonight is that you want an additional workshop, because it's just a little short notice, it's a lot to digest. It was a lot for me to digest. And so what I'm going to recommend to staff is that you take in the comments tonight, and then incorporate those into your response to the HCD, and then we have another workshop and do it in a more informal way, and we talk about this more. Because there's, I think this was, it wasn't enough time for people, obviously it wasn't enough time for people to really digest all this. This is kind of like a first shot. You're getting a lot of information here really quick, and I know you all have a lot of concerns, and really valid ones, and we want to hear those, we want to incorporate that. And, you know, this Type III is the most consequential of the three types they're recommending, because that is an expansion of site coverage, and that's what I heard from all of you that you're concerned about, not site coverage, but floor area, and that's what you're all concerned about, this erosion of, you know, the community through the expansion of the size of buildings, basically, and coverage, and how it affects our natural environment. So that's something which I think we need to have more discussion about, and that will give us an opportunity to do that. I think what's hopeful is that the staff has really taken a strong position, and Evan has done incredible research work, presented really good documentation as to the position of the coastal commission and what the intent of the Coastal Protection Act is. And obviously, we are a community which is totally within the coastal zones, so that's what I would recommend, and I think staff is probably agreeable to that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, you know, my heart's happy because of how many people came tonight and how involved people are. We'll absolutely do a more, I guess, lay-focused meeting, we'll probably do it at Carpenter Hall or somewhere over at Sun Center, so I'm looking at Sun Center, I'm looking forward to that. I apologize for any distress that tonight's meeting gave anybody, it wasn't intended for that, we are just trying to move this process forward, but I definitely hear and understand the comments, there's a lot of information to digest for this meeting, but rest assured, we will have a meeting in the not-too-distant future in a different format to talk about this more and maybe have more pictures and graphs and charts and things like that. So we really appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking to this.
Are we up against a timeline to respond to HCD?
No. The only timeline is, you know, right now, we're a little bit unprotected, and so we've been trying to get back on, move this somewhat quickly, and it is one of the priorities that our city council has asked us to work on, but that doesn't mean we can't have a community meeting soon.
Well, I just want to make sure there's no pressure on the-
No, it's not like the housing element where there's a date that comes and we're subject to like builder's remedy, we're not up against anything like that.
That comes to mind, and we were really up against a deadline.
That's correct.
And I want to make sure that that isn't something that's going to constrain the ability of the public to be engaged in this. Okay, I guess that, I think that concludes the discussion.
We're good.
And we will move on to our next agenda item.
Want to give everybody a second to clear the room? Can I move some folks?
For something else. What's that? Oh, you do, yeah, well, I was going to ask you to take that one. I have to, it's coming up. You could, at what time is it?
I guess. All right, folks, if you're gonna stay, wonderful, we invite you to stay, because it just gets more exciting as the night goes on, but if you're going to leave, we do ask that you take your conversations outside so we can get back to business, so thank you very much.
Okay, this brings us to the public hearings, and we have, the first item is DR 16384, this is the fountain reconsideration granting a time extension. Staff has requested that this be continued. Do we need to allow the comments on the continuation?
Just on the continuance, yeah, just that, you mean if there's anyone that makes, wants to make a comment on the continuance, not the subject matter, but-
Yeah, the public can make comments on the continuation, not the item, the time extension. So if there's anyone that wants to make any comments about the continuation, they can do that at this time. Nobody want to make a comment, nobody online? I don't see any hands going up. In that case, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Pekoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, okay, the motion is carried. Okay, brings us to item number four. This is a design study, 23-137, the Lehman Project. Once again, staff has requested that this be continued to a date uncertain. The public is allowed to make comments regarding the continuation, so if anyone in the public would like to make a comment about the continuation, they can do so at this time.
And Mr. Chair, while people are thinking about that, I just, I was remiss on the last item. We always try to explain why, we write it in our staff report, but on the previous item, staff was requesting the continuance because we took the direction from the planning commission, are doing research on the large file. On this one specifically, there were some administrative things that needed to be taken care of from the applicant's side that were not done, and so we could not bring it to the hearing today.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Can I ask a question? So the continuance, does that extend the timeframe then?
It does, yes.
Okay.
Okay, looks like nobody's having any comments about the continuation, so I'll make a motion that we continue DS 23-137.
I can second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Pekoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, that brings us to item number five on the public hearings. This is a design study, DS 24207, the Hermel Collins Projects, Consideration Revised Concept Design Study Application and Associated Lot Adjustment for the Demolition of a One-Story Single Family Residence and the Construction of a New Two-Story Family Residence. Project is comprised of a 1,855 square foot two-story single-family residence named Hopuna, and is inclusive of a 243 square foot attached garage with associated lot line adjustment. Can we have staff report, please?
Steve, can you please show the presentation?
Yeah, we just need to get access to the other screen, please, you can minimize the zoom. Thank you.
Good evening. As we discussed, we'll be talking about the revised concept for a design study, DS 24207, Hermel Collins, affectionately called Hopuna. Just a refresher on the process so far, we had a design study submittal in July of 2024, and we had the concept design review with the planning commission in October. The plans were revised and resubmitted to staff October 21st, and the applicant has addressed the comments and direction provided by the planning commission. As you can see here, the lot, still lot line adjustment, 4,000 square feet to 4,100, same floor area, same site coverage, but there's been some adjustments. You can see on the site plan here, there is the red line, shows the walls of the previous proposal, so the garage is staying in place, but the first and second story elements of the main house have been shifted south. We had neighbor correspondence for this, we had four residents that reached out, expressing concerns, with one in support. Three residents that reached out with concerns mentioned CEQA, neighborhood character, construction impacts, and there was some mentioning of privacy and view concerns. One resident mentioned concerns over impacts to historic homes in the area, and the one resident that reached out with support stated that they liked the way the architecture fit into the landscaping and the building and proposed design was really conscious of the landscaping. So responses to these, the new homes are in the concept phase right now, and therefore haven't been deemed complete. Once the concept has been accepted by the planning commission, then it'll be deemed a project and it'll undergo CEQA review. So right now, we're still working through to actually make it a project. For the privacy and view concerns, as I'd said previously, the applicant has addressed the direction from the planning commission and feedback from the neighbors by shifting the property south and reducing the heights by two and four feet respectively for the second story and first story. For the construction impacts, that's something that we handle typically in our construction management plans, there is potential for adding conditions to help ease concerns, but it's, there's limits to exactly what we can do. And then for the historic homes in the area, that will be reviewed as part of the CEQA review, once we get to the final stage. So for the new proposed design, you can see on the top, you can see how the building has been shifted south, the bottom was the previously proposed, where it's much closer to the property line. Here's the west elevation, so this is from the street looking at it, the left is the old proposed design, and the right is the new proposed design, and the applicant has included red dash lines that show the outline of the old proposal, so you can see the garage has been lowered with a less steep pitch to the roof, same with the first story and second story, as well as being shifted to the south and the height reduced overall for all structures. I just wanted to show all the different elevations, so same setup, red lines show the previous design, the bottom shows the previous design in full, so you can see how the changes have been made to accommodate for the blocking of the views to the neighbors to the north, and to help address the massing and bulking kind of issues from the neighbors to the east that we're looking up the hill at it. Here is the east elevation, so you can see it's been shifted down with the topography and lowered in height to accommodate the concerns from the commission and the neighbors. And finally, the south elevation, again, shows the same thing, just wanted to give you a view of each elevation and how that change would affect the proposed project. This is a setback vicinity map presented by the applicant to me, so I wanted to share this with you. It's showing the setbacks to the homes to the east for Hopuna and for Kailaia. For right now, we're just focusing on Hopuna, the four northeast of First on Mission. Here is the rendering that we've been provided, the new rendering, you can see the less deep pitches of the roof and the lower roofs to help ease the concerns of the view to the neighbors to the north, where you can see those roofs were previously blocking windows and light and access to views of the green belt. Here is the rendering side by side, so you can see the lowering of the pitches and the reduction in height. Staff recommends that the commission adopt a resolution to accept the revised concept design study and lot line adjustment. Thank you for your time.
Questions for staff from the commission? You have a question here?
Well, actually, no, for staff, no, thank you.
No questions at this time? Okay, thank you, staff. Okay, at this time, my normal time allotments for presentation are five minutes initial for the applicant, three minutes for comments from the public, and then I allow the applicant follow-up time to answer comments from the public. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you, that should be fine with me. I'll be much shorter than the last time I presented all three. I wanted to thank Jake, thank you. I'm going to thank Jake for his thorough review of the project, and can you put back the site plan you're looking at, with the, showed the dash lines of where everything was before? So just going back to the beginning of our design process, we were always very, very cognizant of the upper-level windows to the neighbors to the north. We were also very concerned, or not concerned, but we took it as an inspiration to really maintain the existing pine oak woodland in the front, so that's why you get the orientation, that woodland actually goes between the two properties, and so you have a lot on the southwest corner of the lot is basically this open space toward the street and for the trees. And so in doing that, we needed to place a two-story element somewhere, and so we had to basically, we wanted to place it behind, to the east of those major windows on Mr. Krab's property to the north. And so now, as you, I think you all went up there last time, and there's completely unencumbered views of that, of the ocean from those, that location. So we had to maintain all this. What we didn't, although, you know, I realized it before the meeting, and I started thinking about it and presented an alternative at the last meeting for their lower windows. And what we did is we continued, came back, listened to the suggestions of the planning commission and the neighbors, and further advised the design to make some really dramatic accommodations and improvements. As Jake said, we did this in two important ways.
unencumbered views of that, of, of the ocean from those, those, that location. So we had to maintain all this. What we didn't, although, you know, I realized it before the meeting, and I started thinking about it and presented an alternative at the last meeting for their lower windows. And what we did is we continued, came back, listened to the suggestions of the planning commission and the neighbors, and further resigned, revised the design to make some really dramatic accommodations and improvements. As Jake said, we did, did this in two important ways. One was to give the Krabs' house in the north a little, a more space on their side yard. So we moved the building, except for the garage, which had an important tree that we had to maintain. The rest of the house, all of it moves two feet to the south. So that expands the side yard space, giving a little more light and air to that side of the property. And it does a few other things, which I'll mention soon. Can we go to the west elevation, which showed the, yes, the different height changes? And secondly, we lowered the roof height by a huge amount. And part of this was taking, I believe it was Commissioners Kerpetkov's recommendation to lower the slopes of the roof, so we got them down to 4.75 and 12, which is a fairly low slope. And we lowered that across the entire house. We additionally lowered the entire house and into the ground an additional eight inches. And we integrated another suggestion into our design, which is using some horizontal siding for the two-story element to lessen its verticality. The results, I hope you really noticed from the story polls at the site, the top ridges of the garage and the kitchen areas, which were in front of the neighbors' living room windows and its bathroom, their bathroom window, really went down to, as you saw, it's barely, the ridge now is barely above the height of the existing roof. And so I think that puts it about at the sill line of those living room windows. So as you saw when you're in the house, you can look basically completely over that. As I discussed at the last meeting, we looked to follow the residential design guidelines closely and prioritize that urban forest. So again, keeping that two-story element back, but by lowering the roofs and lowering the whole house, lowering the sill of the roof and then lowering the house, we're able to reduce the height of the upper roof by two foot, three inches, which is a significant reduction. The lower roofs went down by four foot, eight inches. So we're not talking small amounts here. So because of the location of this two-story element, I couldn't bring it, if they brought far, far, they would block the windows from the upper windows, so it, it needed to go kind of where it was and to protect the trees in the rear. So there is not a lot of other movement we can do to, to, to make it work, but it does put, even though we have two more feet in, for the side yard setback, the one window in their lower bedroom is, the, the two-story form is in front of that, but with a little more space to create light and air. You notice if you're in that bedroom, there's also a nice rear French doors that were glazed out to the rear yard. So it's not the only view out of that bedroom. In addition, by lowering the entire house and significantly reducing the roof slopes, yeah, I mentioned that, we were able to lower it by two foot, three. Can you show the vicinity site plan, please? And then, I, I don't know if Karen Sharp is in the audience this time, but she is the, has the property directly to the east, and it, I think you all visited that property last time. There's a major tree in, basically to the south side of the rear yard, and it blocks a lot of the, of the, this house from view. By moving it two additional feet over, it blocks even more view. So it's definitely helped there. Plus the two foot, three addition, I'll just make clear, as you see from these, this plan, these houses are over 60 feet from the second story element. And I, I guess I'll go back to my original, even though I think we did do a good job of mitigating some of those impacts. And Carmel with such small dense lots, it's really, you know, seeing someone's roof, I don't think is a significant impact. So I think that's balanced fairly well. In addition to this, I just wanted to mention, I know it's
Eric, how much additional time do you think you're going to need?
I, I would be almost done.
All right, okay, thank you.
Minute or two. So I just wanted to mention a couple of other things. I know it's not part of this meeting regarding the two other lots, but I wanted to let the commission know that I did take, to heart, the issues brought up the last hearing for the two houses. We were able, and this was changed in the story polls, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, or I should have pointed it out while we were there, but the detached garage of the middle lot, the Kaila property, I shifted that two feet back. So that's even have, has less impact to the street. And you can notice that. And then I'm also, and you'll see it in the upcoming final details review for the Ahana project, integrating Commissioner Allen's recommendation to reduce the size of the front street-facing window. I just, in conclusion, I just wanted to add, I did read the emails about CEQA. As Jake mentioned, staff will be addressing that at the next hearing, but I would like to add, as I, you know, the longest-serving member, I believe, of the city's Historic Resources Board, I'm highly sensitive and knowledgeable to the needs of historic resources and historic preservation, and none of these three projects are adjacent to historic resources. The nearby ones are all set within their respective properties and thus retain their historic integrity and are not impacted. You know, I think there may be times when CEQA is, is, could be used to evaluate projects adjacent to historic resources, but usually those are in much more dense areas where you're kind of on top of the other projects. So even the one that I think, the property to the northeast here, there was a discussion at the site that it may, could possibly have been historic, but it's also over 60 feet from what we're doing. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for the architect?
I, I have one question, question. Eric, do you already know who the contractor will be for these three projects? Is it one contractor or multiple?
We're planning to, it's, I don't think it's, I think it's determined, but I'm not exactly, I, I haven't verified that for sure, but it will be one contractor. That is, have one contractor organize the whole thing. So there'd be ample opportunity to coordinate with the neighbors in terms of how the whole construction process would go, and try to do as much accommodation as possible.
Yeah, the, the reason is, is that, you know, there will be three buildings, and if you do it in sequence, it's a lot of noise on many days of a long period of time. Hopefully by having one contractor, things can be done in parallel.
Yeah, exactly, more efficiently, exactly.
Yeah.
And there'd be less people on the job site.
Exactly, yeah, because
Less parking issues.
Yeah, you know, like pouring foundation, you can do it, and one day you can do all three of them. You don't need to bring extra crews.
And there's going to be a, you know, doing it all at once. There's going to be some efficiencies involved with that, and that will affect the time of the construction. So it would be much less than if you normally see three houses in a row being built in Carmel, which is not really uncommon these days. It's, it will be much quicker than that process.
It would be good to have some kind of a document that describe, maybe from the contractor, that describes the efficiencies of building the three houses in parallel, something that neighbors can receive and appreciate.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Because obviously, there's no nice way of building three houses, but in comparison to building them in sequence, it's better to do it in parallel.
Yeah, it'll be less impacts, and so I appreciate that. I'll, I'll go back to the owners and clients and review that with the builder that's probably going to be building it, and we'll try to present something at the
Especially the moist stuff, you know, pouring concrete is not noisy, but like framing is very noisy. Even, even insulation, if you spray, spray insulation, it's noisy because of the compressors, right?
Yeah.
So this, it did create a lot of noise, or any demolition that needs to be done, if, if it's possible to coordinate that and, and shorten the time of, of noise and, and dust and dirt when they build it.
Yeah, we'll look at that and get back to you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I, I will reserve some time at the end just to
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite members of the public to come forward, make their comments about the project.
Chuck Nagerian, Carmel resident. Generally speaking, I'm concerned about the number of exemptions that are taking place, exemptions from the California Environmental Quality Act, which is a protective statute. I implemented the California Environmental Quality Act for the state of California for 30 years, and I've never seen such concerning violations of the statute at any level of government at any time as I've observed in Carmel. You're exempting anything and everything from CEQA, and now you're planning to do it again with these three side-by-side projects. Who or what does that benefit? I know one thing, it doesn't benefit the environment, and it certainly doesn't benefit the residents. You're claiming that each house is a standalone individual project apart from the other two, but they clearly aren't in terms of CEQA applicability. They have the same owner, architect, builder, design, landscaping, permitting schedule, and the same demolition and construction timing. Pursuant to CEQA, you must consider the whole of the action. It's expressly prohibited to piecemeal projects to avoid the statute. There are numerous unusual circumstances that lead to a reasonable possibility of significant impacts, and there are, quote, cumulative impacts from past, present, and foreseeably future projects, especially multiple significant construction activities. These points are fully documented in the resident's letter that you received. They disqualify these three proposed houses from any exemption. You should reboot and prepare an initial study pursuant to CEQA and determine if an environmental impact report mitigated negative declaration or negative declaration is required. Keep in mind that our one-square-mile village has over 80 protected rare, threatened, and endangered special status plant and wildlife species and a national marine sanctuary right down the street. This setting in itself is a very unusual circumstance. Many of these species are federally protected pursuant to the Endangered Species Act. These species and their habitat cannot be adversely impacted or degraded by any actions you take. In 2018, you approved, or the planning commission at the time approved, two adjacent houses, a stone's throw away from the three proposed homes you're considering now. It resulted in the loss of 13 or more protected Monterey pines due to illegal trenching. Some fell on an historic house on Mission Street. Sensitive habitat was destroyed. Federal and state environmental laws were broken. I note the planning commission also exempted those two houses at that time from the California Environmental Quality Act. I ask you to please not make that same mistake this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners Arlene Ichin. I'm speaking as a retired attorney who's had over 30 years' experience in environmental law and permitting at the state level. And I want to make three key points about CEQA. First, the environmental documents that are intended to result from a CEQA analysis and review are meant to benefit you, the decision-makers, by giving you important information about the project, its potential consequences or adverse impacts, or even good impacts, and also to better inform you of mitigation measures that can be designed, proposed, to reduce or even eliminate adverse impacts. It's very important as a state law in ensuring that decision-makers are well-informed about the decisions they're requested to make. I also want to take a bit of, an aside with regards to the project. The former speaker mentioned that the project here under CEQA is one project of one applicant with an architect, builder, who wants to permit three different houses on lots that are adjacent to each other. CEQA requires that the decision-makers take the whole of an action that's proposed. And in this case, based on the facts and the applicant, it is one project to consider the whole of the action that the applicant is requesting permits for. Whether you're going to be issuing three or one permit, nevertheless, there is an applicant before you with the whole of her action or his action, and that's what you need to take into account in determining what the potential impacts are. The second, and also going back to the CEQA documents that are expected from an analysis, they are, as I said, meant to benefit you as the decision-makers by making you better informed at the end of the day. And they shouldn't be considered a punishment for something that was, you know, neglected on your part or whatever. It's, it's neglectful not to conduct this permitting process in accordance with CEQA, and that is to do the environmental analysis that's expected for you as decision-makers to be better informed. Secondly, the so-called CEQA documents also benefit the neighbors and other interested members of the public, and it makes for a more public participatory process if it's conducted in accordance with CEQA. So that you as decision-makers ultimately get the, get the input from neighbors who have experienced what's happened with previously permitted houses in their neighborhood, what the unfortunate adverse whatever impacts resulted from that, and what should be, oh, I'm sorry, okay, and what you should learn from that. And then lastly, lastly, I think that you should also be, be open and inviting of public participation to the extent that it allows for a meaningful exchange between you as decision-makers, the applicant, and the applicant's team of architect, contractor, et cetera, and, and importantly, the members of the neighborhood, who after all have a very sensitive neighborhood with important historic houses that need to be considered and taken into account and not damaged in any way. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, could I just make one comment while
Yeah, go ahead.
...coming up? So I just want to address the CEQA thing in case there's more comments about that. I just want to be clear that tonight's, or tonight's item in front of the planning commission is not a yes or no decision. There's no projects being approved or denied tonight. This is a concept hearing. So under CEQA, this is, this is not a project yet. The point of CEQA is that once you have a static project, then, then you do your CEQA analysis. So these concept hearings are refining a project. So projects change through these, through these, through these hearings, and then once that's solidified, that's why we come back to you with final details. There will be a CEQA analysis provided to you and as part of the staff report when we come back. And then that may be a categorical exemption. I'm not going to say what it's going to be yet. We need to wait till the project is solidified, and then you apply the test of whether, you know, it's going to have a direct or indirect impact on the environment. But I just want to be clear that, that there is no, there is no CEQA action tonight because this is technically not a project yet. It's not solidified.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, please go ahead.
Leslie Beckett is my name, and we live about a block, not even a block. We live three, I believe it's three lots over where the project is going to start. And I just wanted to say that I hope you will take the neighbors really into consideration. We had a project done right next to our home, and, you know, everybody's always very optimistic in the beginning that it's gonna, you know, take a shorter amount of time, and especially a project of this scale. Our, the project next to us, we were told, just, it's a 40 by 100 lot, and we were told it was going to go through quickly. Everything would be fine. You know, we're not the youngest folks around here, and it took just days short of five years to get the house built and completed next to us. And, excuse me.
Sir?
Yeah. So I was just saying, the house located next to us used to be an empty lot, and it took five years to get it built from ground up. And when you're the age we are, you know, five years is a long time, and not having any parking, everybody parking there for five years. And I, I just think that our neighbors and the, very near this project, we've been through a lot with the, the prior five-year project, and the idea of having to go through it again for three lots. And it's just no quality of life whatsoever in Carmel for the people next to this one that's going to be starting. And, you know, we were promised a lot of things by people saying, oh, yeah, well, we'll make sure the contractor knows that people have to move their cars and not be there. And it just went on and on. And then when you get into it, contractor And then when you get into it, contractor doesn't really care if you've got cars parking in front of your house for five years. And, you know, people would double park, and I've got mobility issues and hard to get out of the gate because, you know, it's just the ramifications are huge. And I'm here not about my thing. We lived through it. But I just think that the councils don't look, you know, at some of these issues and how they affect neighbors in the long run. And I don't think people should be buying these million-dollar homes only to be miserable while a project, I mean, I don't know how you could do it, but there should be some way somehow that, you know, if the project isn't done by X, Y, Z time, two years, three years, but five is impossible. And along with that, if they don't upkeep them, and then you get a rodent problem which you never had, and now you can't get rid of them, all the people in our neighborhood are still dealing with this after five years because of the garb that was left and so.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Chris, for preparing these for me. This is Carol Hall, Commission and Staff. I wanted to speak to the historic homes in the neighborhood and the design guidelines in relation to that. First, I would like to, I'm wondering if architects' renderings of homes, if we could remove all of the foliage in front of them so we could see what they actually look like, that would really be helpful. We're seeing all of these pictures, not just on this project, but others too, where they have all these trees in front, and what's behind them? We can't see what the impact is from the street. So it seems to me landscaping is transitional, whereas homes are permanent for at least, you know, 100 years or whatever. So that's just one thought. But what I wanted to talk to you about was, you have to turn it that way. Van White, come on. So the yellow are not yet historic homes, but likely to be, they haven't been reviewed yet. The orange are historic homes already, and you can see where most of them, nine of them as a matter of fact, are right there in the same block as the three homes that we're talking about, which are made in blue, done in blue. And the design guidelines spell out that projects should be consistent with the character and the context of the neighborhood. These are older transitional, I mean transitional, traditional homes that these new projects are not aligned with. This is in our design guidelines, and we hope to stretch that to mean for the village as well as just the neighborhood as well. So I just wanted to point that out, and you'll be hearing from a lot of the neighbors today. I think that's all I have to say. So bless me, I'm very, very brief. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor Lapage, I did it again. Chairman Lapage, I keep elevating your status. Members of the Commission, members of City Staff, my name is Cindy Lloyd. I'm going to show you some photographs I took this morning of four houses that were born, that were built in a row on Torrey Street between 9th and 10th, 8th and 9th. My father built them. They were all, became mid-century modern by definition. One of the houses was demolished and a house was built in its place. I think what I'm trying to show is that there has been, in Carmel, multiple houses built one next to another in a whole project, built by the same person, and that over time, those houses, while my doubt that my dad did any kind of landscaping, those houses settle in. And as clear as I can remember, I think I was in high school at the time, so it would have been in the '50s when these houses were built. Just to help everybody understand that there's a little bit of okay with doing a project with multiple houses at the same time. I can empathize with the neighbors. It's going to be noisy. It's going to be messy. There are going to be cars barked all over the place. I've had the same thing in front of my house, and I have had a house built in front of my house that destroyed my view. So I have a lot of empathy, but on the other hand, I do believe that Mr. Dyer has designed three separate houses with separate looks and separate architecture and landscaping around it that will fit very nicely into the neighborhood once the dust settles. So I don't know if I can speak and do the overhead at the same time, but I can try.
Cindy, are you going to need more time for this presentation?
No, I'm just going to show you some pictures, and then I'm going to sit.
Okay, all right.
I am trying to get to sunset for a presentation. So how does this work? Oh, oh, my gosh, that's so easy. Oh, wow. Okay, this is on Torrey Street, looking up toward the first house that Daddy built, and it's showing mainly the roof line because you can't see it for all the trees. This is that same house from the street, and it looks like it's kind of settled in. This is the second house he built, and as you can see, they're all the same design. It's not a great picture, but there it is. And this is the third house that remains of the four that he built. This is just a second view of it getting a little closer. You can see the similarity in the design, and it's hard to believe that this house has remained in all those years. But my sister and I were looking at it one day, and the owners came out and invited us in, and it's exactly the way my dad built it. This is a picture of the house that was built in the space where they demolished the house. Good luck tonight. I'm going to leave you because I'm going to go to sunset and learn all about Dean Denny and Hazel Waters, who were family friends. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is John Turner. I live on Hennepin, just behind this project. First and foremost, I think CEQA does address.
Would you pull the mic up closer?
Sure. Yeah, my name's John. I live just east of this development, and it's going to affect my view shed profoundly. I think you saw, you know, my home today as you walked through it, the sky and the light. Brandon, you know, first thing I want to mention is that CEQA should start at the beginning of a project, not the end. It addresses view shed and how it impacts the neighborhood. So you're unequivocally incorrect in that statement. So it's okay not to know something, but don't say that you know something when you don't because essentially it affects the decision tonight. Similarly, during the last meeting that we had on this, when everyone spoke about that there were no, you know, historical homes in the area, I guess you have to say adjacent homes. There are plenty of historical homes in this neighborhood, and this modern design, modern Bay Area design is going to pack the neighborhood profoundly. You know, so with that said, enough was mentioned, we did submit that letter with 60, over 60 signatures from our neighbors, our immediate neighbors in the area, that are opposed to this modern design project. And I just wanted to leave you with a thought that the neighborhood is adamant that the first decision with accepting these two designs needs to be revoked, and I don't know how to go forward, but we're really far apart in this process. The architect has never really worked with the neighborhood, as opposed to they have in some other more successful projects in the area. We saw the story polls up. He, you know, delivered the notices on her porch, and it's very obvious here, he lowered it by two feet or just maybe two feet and some inches. That's ridiculous. None of those, none of those modern homes that she showed here were two-story. This thing's massive, and it's affecting the neighborhood. And also, you know, with that said, this is going to be profoundly disrupted. I've asked some of the staff here, how are we going to mitigate the noise? And I said, one thing I've seen is what they do tile sawing and stone cutting indoors. We did it at our house when we had our kitchen remodeled where the tile saw was done indoors. The, you know, the construction person wore, you know, a headset to do that. But around here in Carmel, you talk about a tranquil environment, but it's never even taken into consideration, all these projects you see, everyone, they're doing tile sawing outdoors. It's ridiculous. And then I bring that up, that should be under CEQA as a matter of fact, and it should be in the plan or not with the building department. When I stopped in, I asked about it, you know, Jake said, oh, you can talk to the building department about it. They came back again, oh, maybe talk to Brandon about it. It's none of that. It's part of the initial CEQA report that needs to happen. And so I got like 15 seconds left. I thought maybe we'd do just like a moment of contemplative silence so you guys can truly think about the decision you're going to make tonight. If it's not the right one, we're going to take it all the way and stop this.
I think your time's up.
Is it? Tell you got a few more seconds.
I can't see.
You're over by 30 seconds, actually.
I think your time might be up if you don't make the right decision tonight, though. That's a trip.
Wow. Okay. Okay, the next speaker, please.
Neil Cruz. To all of the residents in the room, this talk is to you. I've already given it to them. They couldn't care less what I said. So I'm talking to all of you tonight. I heard the architect mention that they're working closely with the design guidelines. We have 9.0 design guidelines. Excessive repetition of these styles or any style would undermine the diversity of Carmel's neighborhoods. All the time, Carol and I have been hearing, no, we need diversity in style. We need some modern houses. We don't have any. We need diversity, diversity, diversity. And all of a sudden, we have a modern design in front of this commission, and now we don't need diversity anymore. It looks really good when a whole bunch of modern houses are right next to each other. Am I making my point? But let's go on from there. Metal, plastic, and glass roofs are inappropriate in all neighborhoods. It doesn't say recommended, should be avoided. It says are inappropriate, period. And also, this commission has also talked about standing seam metal roofs and that they wanted to have discussion about that because there's a concern about whether they're really okay. Suddenly, no problem. Window styles, divided light windows are encouraged. Divided light windows should appear to be true divided light, including use of internal and external mullion and mutton bars on insulated window and external, and, excuse me, windows. Removable or snap-on or internal-only mullion and mutton bars are unacceptable. Sir, could you put up the elevations of the north and the south elevation? I believe it's sheet 11. There you go. Okay, I ask you in this room, if you were to see this designed in another city, in another location, would you immediately say, oh, wow, that belongs in Carmel? Does it not look unfinished to you? Does it look like they forgot some things like where's the trim or where's the ornament? It's just these open, empty windows. It doesn't even look like it's inhabited, does it? But this would look really good at San City, don't you think, with the other warehouses? This is not a Carmel design. But let me read just to be sure from the general plan of the city of Carmel. Carmel's stone, local granite, and the frequent use of wood in hand-carved doors, windows, frames, sills, moldings, roofing materials, and signs are all design features that contribute to the village character of Carmel. These form a contrast to the glass, steel, plastic, and featureless gray concrete so often found in other more urban cities. Are we about to become an other more urban city? Attention to detail and emphasis on fine craftsmanship can be seen in the varied architecture of Carmel. Local builders have embarrassed their work with detailing and individual style, which creates a unique and appealing building design. This is not a design for the village of Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Kimberly Edwards. This is my boyfriend, Monty, and we live on the southwest corner of Uniprom Vista. And I first want to say, you know, I'm fully supportive of the letter that was drafted and submitted to you and the city outlining the concerns that the neighborhood has. There are seven pages of signatures attached to the letter. I and my neighbor Tom and John were all personally together collecting those signatures, and we had detailed conversations with every single person that signed that, and they were all very concerned and very behind this letter and all its concerns. There are a lot of young families with children that are small that are all of adjacent to this project. They ride their bikes, they walk, they go to and from the school, the Stevenson School that is two blocks away. You have a lot of young kids that are going to be around this construction zone that could go on for years. So we feel that, you know, we all agree as residents that we're owed an environmental study before all of this is approved, you know, implementing CEQA. I mean, not waiting until it's all the way down the line and everything's approved. So I want to say, you know, I moved here in 2012, and it was my understanding that your commission was, your job was to preserve the character of the neighborhoods, to protect us, and that we are your number-one consideration. But I stand here, and I feel like we're not your number-one consideration. You are taking a developer that's going to take my view away, my sunsets, my trees, my ocean view. You're going to take him, make him a priority over me, who has, and this house has been here for 50 years, and I've been here for 15 years. You're going to make him a priority over me. That's what you're saying to me, for profit. I wouldn't feel exactly the same way if this was a single home built by someone who has a love for the area, wants their dream home. This is not that. This is not personal for these people. This is about profit. This is personal for me and all these people that are standing up here. So, and as someone said before, an earlier speaker on Zoom said, you know, we're losing the character of our city by a thousand cuts. And this Bay Area modern design does not belong on this street with all these historic homes. It's, to me, it is very unattractive, and I moved here from the Bay Area. This would be appropriate in a completely different setting. It's unacceptable to me, and it's unacceptable that you think I should lose my view and give that to them. Why should, why is that? Why should I use my ocean view so that they can have one when they can build a one-story home? All these homes should be one-story homes, and it's totally feasible to do so. Thank you.
Well, you mentioned that last time we were here that everybody's entitled to build a two-story home.
Move a little closer to the mic. Thank you.
And if it's going to be a two-story home, what if we just take the top of that house and turn it into a flat top or excavate and drop the whole house down? It would, the people that live right next to it, it's an abomination. They can't see anything. You guys saw it today. You know, if it was in your place, you wouldn't put up with that. You wouldn't allow that. You wouldn't like that. So there I just stand. So in a timeline, this could go on forever. So there should be a timeline attached to this with penalties afterwards if they run over. You know, no matter what, they're going to build something. But you got to, you have to be friendly to the neighbors. You just can't put a barn up in front of a house. It's not, it's not right. Thank you.
It truly, it breaks my heart, really.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Yes.
Please come up, sir.
How you doing? My name's Tom Morjig, and my wife and I live across the street from the project. We bought our house in 1989. It was in total dismay, and we spent more money putting it back together. It was built in 1929 than we would have knocking it down and building a new one. At the time, we didn't know its, its historic value. We found out two and a half years later when Francis Whittaker, Ed Ricketts Jr., and all the family members came by, and we found out who used to be there and what was going on. My first experience with this planning commission was in 2018. And at that point, next to my next door neighbor, Susan over here, she asked me to speak for her too. She's down to the, the south of our house. Behind her, there was a lot, and that lot had one single-story house built in 1925. And you allowed them to knock that house down and build two, two-story houses, which blocked our view, number one. And number two, you did it because you said that there are 17 trees on the property and they're preserving all 17 trees. Okay? I said, it's not going to work because you're cutting the roots of those trees. Oh, no, we're putting sticks up around the trees and everything's going to be fine. Not one branch had fallen the first 20 years that we were there with all those trees. Not one. The very first storm in January 2019, four trees fell on our property, on our house. Okay? Our historic house. And it also fell on Susan's house over there, too. It cost me $30,000 to replace my roof. My insurance didn't pay for it because the roof was fixed in a way that it looked horrible, and I had to replace it. And I learned my lesson. We all came and testified not to, not to build those houses, and you guys just ignored us. And this time, we're not going to allow that to happen. I was one of the signatures on that letter. It wasn't just put together by the, the four of us or the seven of us. We met with the whole neighborhood before, and we all talked about what was going to go in that letter. You all have copies of it, and we are going to stand by what we're doing, and we're going to make sure that our issues are going to be addressed, number one. And one more additional thing at the end, we were excited when we found out that they're going to build new houses across the street, honestly, because we thought there's going to be three nice Carmel houses across the street that fit the neighborhood. Okay? We were, I even talked to the architect before he told me what the design was, and I talked to the, the person who lives there who knows the owner. I said, look, we want to buy one of those houses for our daughter's family. We want her living across the street from us. And we saw the design, we almost choked, and we took it to our daughter, and she said, I don't know why I'd ever live in one of those houses. That's not a Carmel house. So that's our comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Mary Lounsbury. I live on Huniporo directly behind these houses that are being constructed. Basically, if you go into my backyard, all you see are the houses that are being constructed, and that's going to be a nightmare. First of all, the noise, the dust, the pollution. As the wind blows from east to west, it's going to blow directly at us on Huniporo. My partner and I, who are retired, have had respiratory issues this last year, and that'll be a nightmare when that comes at us. Also, the backyard is a refuge. We won't even want to go in the backyard with all the noise and construction going on from the demolition. And then today, I realized there's a giant pine tree in our backyard right next to the fence line. When they build these houses, especially when they do the grading, they will, they will undoubtedly affect the roots of this giant pine tree. So it'll probably fall when we have a big storm. It'll either fall on us on Huniporo, which could cause a lot of injury or death, a lot of property damage, or it could fall on the construction that's being proposed. I'm very sensitive to the fact that there's going to be a parking nightmare. Every time I walk by construction sites, just one house being constructed, there are trucks all over the street. If you have three houses being constructed, people on Mission aren't going to have any parking at all. It's going to be awful. And some people on Mission don't have garages. They have short driveways. So that's a concern for me. What else? Well, that's the main thing. These houses are backed up so close to the fence line, they will impact that giant tree. And the tree is home to lots of wildlife, squirrels, birds. I hate to see that tree come down. I think a lot of the other points have been cited by other people, so thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chair of the page and commissioners, my name's David Crabbe, and this is my wife, Jung, and we live in the house directly north of the project. Thank you for coming by today and seeing what the changes were done to the house. I just wanted to talk about what some of the impacts are. You know, you guys were getting a really quick snapshot of what it changes, but, but, you know, we lived in the house for 10 years. We now have a young family that lives there with two young children. But when the sun comes up in the morning, it starts in the east, as we all know, and it comes across. And so a lot of our morning light comes from that direction in all the windows that you observed today. There is improvement in the living room windows, mostly the one to the farthest west. The next one still has some, some impacts. The bathroom impacts with the sun coming up and light coming into the house will be impacted, and obviously the bedroom that is blocked as well as views from the back deck when you look to the, to the south.
I'll break it.
So a couple of things. One is that in the, you know, I know we're talking about one design, but there were three designs there. When they designed all three of these projects, they definitely protected their light and views for each of those homes, but they did not take into account the neighbors. And I think it's fair for you guys to say, hey, look, let's, let's take into account the neighbors as well as the three homes that you're building. So I, I don't think that's an unreasonable approach for you guys to look at and make sure that the neighbors are also taken care of as well as the developer. You know, I did, I've looked at, I'm a realtor, and I looked at a couple of homes on Tuesday broker's tours, and I was looking at a couple of homes. I actually sent you some photos. I don't know if you can put them up. But they're, they're, they're two-story homes or that are on a slope similar to the design of the two that you approved. And, and those homes had, you know, little or no impact to the neighbors' light or views. And I don't think it's unreasonable to have that same design on this third home. And the reason that, so these, you can see these are single-story, but it's actually a two-story home because it, it drops down below. And then the one to the right, the construction one, the reason I was pointing that one out is because I know there's an oak tree in the back of this house. And if you show, if you could pan down a little bit and show the construction, this is also a home that's going to be single-story with, with a building down below. And you can see the oak tree, how they've worked around that to make it work and still put on, make it a two-story home. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the developer to, you know, the street impression is a lot smaller impact. It's a, it's a smaller view, but you still get the square footage by putting the second story down below. These are sloped lots. Our lots are sloped. The two lower homes have similar slopes, and I think it's reasonable. The fill that's there, that was filled to put a pad in, and I think that's removable without doing any hardship to any of the landscaping around, so.
This is another design on.
Yeah, so this is another home that was on Huniporo. It's another two-story home. I took a picture down the side so you could see how it stepped down in the back to, to go in with the slope. These are obviously structures that you're aware of and probably approved at some point. But I thought they were well-designed as far as taking into account neighbor impacts. Let's see. So, so, I mean, we are worried about the construction and how long that's going to take. We have a young family there. We don't know if they're going to be willing to stay there when this goes on. They have two young children. If they move out and parking is difficult for them, then obviously, you know, it'd be difficult to get another family to move in there during construction. So I would appreciate that if there was some, either strong recommendations or guidelines for them as far as how to manage the, the neighbors and not be too much of an impact. I did have a question about the story polls. We are looking at story polls. We see what he's showing us as the impact. Is there any verification that those are accurate? Do we know if the building's actually going to be a little bit taller, a little bit smaller? Or is that going to be, does anybody go out and see if they are representative of what's actually going to be built? I was just curious about that. You guys may have an answer. You know, I can also say that, and this is from the investor standpoint, and I look at it as in realtors, and I list homes, show homes, single-story homes have a lot of value. There are, I can't tell you how many people come in and say, man, only if there was a single-story home or this was single-story, we'd be really interested in it. Because as you know, Carmel's a retire, more of a retirement or an aging community. So upstairs, so from a, from an investor standpoint and from a designer standpoint, I can tell you that putting in single-story homes have value and, and are in demand just from, for FYI to the designers and the developers. I don't know, did you have anything to add?
No, I thought you did great.
Okay. I think that's all I have. But again, thank you guys for coming out. I think it is very important for you guys to come out and actually see what's going on, see the impacts, and I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Please come forward. Next speaker.
Thank you. I am kind of surprised to hear that these three houses.
Can you, can you pull the microphone to you?
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Thank you.
All right. I'm surprised that these three houses, they are the same developer as the new house to be built right next to me on a different block, although it is only one block away from these three houses. So my house is the second, second southeast of San Carlos, and this new house next to me to the south is going to be the third, third southeast of First on San Carlos. So I just realized the names of the three houses to be built on Mission is going to be the, it is actually the same with the, the house next to me. Looks like the design is similar, too. So now, I actually, I'm very concerned because I wonder if there is a fourth, fifth, sixth house in this small community that we have in our neighborhood that's going to be by the same owner with the same design. And I had a sense of comfort in talking with the architect who is going to design the house next to me. And I like him personally, and I thought he's a wonderful listener, and I have shared my concern with our city planner, Evan Court. He was wonderful. But now, being here and heard what is going to happen to the other three houses, I actually feel like I have more concern, and not just about the house next to me, but overall, what is happening here in Carmel? And we are a community together. I don't feel like personally I am against new houses. New houses can be a good thing as long as they are designed in harmony with Carmel and, and also keeping the character, the historical character of Carmel. It, they can generate values for the neighborhood, but, but not at the cost of blocking neighbors' ocean view. In my case, I have a view of Point Lobos, and that's my inspiration for painting, my husband writing. So we, we, we don't want to lose that view because of this new house. It's going to be a two-story house. So I share the neighbor's concern, and I just want to make a connection here. There's not just a three house. There is another house to be built on the next block. Maybe there is another one by the same developer on a different street nearby. So this is all connected. It's really worrisome to me now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the chamber want to make comments? We have a, we have a hand up online. Okay, come on up.
My name is Greg Balaganian, and I live directly across Mission Street from these three homes that are proposed to be built. What I'm going to say is a summary to a degree, and I didn't prepare a speech. It's, it's philosophical and economical. My wife and I got married at the church of the Wayfarer in 1965, and I just lost her a month ago. We bought this historic house built by George Whitcomb for himself on Mission Street, six northwest of First Street. And originally, we bought that as a second home and to remodel it. It took us four years to remodel it because at that particular time, I don't know how many people remember Innit Sales. Innit Sales was the private architectural police force in Carmel at that time. And, and, and she was very concerned what we were going to do with the home. What we did was, we told Innit, basically, we'll work with you, we'll work with the planning commission, and, and we'll preserve the architectural integrity of that particular house. And the only thing that we asked basically is that the house deteriorated. We bought it from an estate, basically, and it needed to be taken down to the two-by-fours. In those days, it was two-by-threes. And, and, and rebuild it and expand it a little bit. And we did that, basically. And because at that time, the, the procedures for approval, et cetera, the, the, it was time-consuming. My wife even took details of every window, which were used to be, basically, they were crank seal types, and they were steel, but they were rusted, so we couldn't save them. So she basically completely documented exactly the mullions, et cetera, and we reproduced the house basically the way George Wincomb, Whitcomb and his wife basically wanted the house to look. The reason we came here, our primary home is in Malibu, was in Malibu. We still have that home, but our primary home is now. But I lost my wife about a month ago, basically, and she'll be horrified to see what we're talking about. And, and at that particular time, basically, the reason people came to Carmel is they saw the ambiance, they saw the character, and they said, this is where we can find peace and quiet. And today, we're living in a change, and I understand this change. This, there's an economic change, basically, and there is a generational change. But you people, both in staff and in commission, you have a responsibility. And, and I'm appealing to your conscience now. What is this conscience? Are we going to basically fall in line with the economic demands of outside forces? Speculating on Carmel property because it has become so profitable? And you can see more and more of the projects, our speculation, just like the two homes right behind me that we talked about, basically, that, that the trees basically were all destroyed when the commission was saying, oh, but they're saving the trees, they're saving the trees. It's a joke. So I'm appealing to you to ask yourself the question, basically. Are you basically going to create an inertia to resist this economic pressure, basically, to change Carmel once and for all? And when that happens, basically, about the only thing we're going to have is basically the ocean, and that's it. So my, I'm appealing to you, basically, to reevaluate, what are you really approving? And who are you really working for? Are you working for the residents that want to preserve Carmel? Or you want to work for, basically, firms that come in, speculate, and leave, basically? And when they build these kinds of structures, basically, you know what that's going to cause? That's going to cause turnover over and over and over again. It's going to be good for the real estate industry, but it surely is not going to be good for us. Now, I'll finish on this point. When initially I saw the presentation, basically, I was horrified to see that the comments were, there were no, on this block of between, between First Street and Vista, there were no architectural issues because there were no architecturally significant homes. How in the hell did that get into that, into the document? Who reviewed that particular document and stamped it to let it out and be written that way? I'd like an answer to that. I'd like an answer to that. Surely, the commission didn't look and say, "Let's look at this particular block and see what they're doing," basically, and see what they're presenting on paper is truthful." The second thing is, even the staff today is presenting on the board, one guy, one person said this, another person said that, et cetera. We have, we have a letter, basically, that we are completely in accord on everything that has been said about this. So to take these individual initial surveys, basically, and make them as a presentation, and give the, and give the impression, basically, that this is a scattered, basically, opinion of the community. It is not. We are united. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to, okay, come on up. I'm going to get the person online, but go ahead, come on up.
I have a lot of time before me.
We want to hear from you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Karen Sharp. I happen to own a house that is below these houses that have been purchased there, and I'm also a neighbor of the owners of these two houses. They own a house across the street from me on Community Rail. I don't particularly care for their design, but since I've done houses myself, I think people have their own ideas and so forth. But when you come into Carmel, you need to look at what is beautiful about Carmel, what is making it unique and so forth, and I don't believe that these particular houses that they've designed are just that. I feel compassionate for the people who live around them. I own the house below theirs, their property, as a rental house, and my tenant, of course, is going to have to listen to a lot of banging and so on and so forth, which we do when we build houses, we know how that is. But I would ask you all to look at this, these particular plans very carefully, and help them build a better house. Do better, do diligence about our community and keep the noise levels down. You can't do all three of them at once, and if they do them one at a time, it's going to be terrible, so, I don't know. It's just one of those things that puts us all into a situation of not even being able to make a great decision, but I know that you all will, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Melanie, you want to come up?
Staff Commission, Melanie Billig. I spent several years on the first Design Traditions project in this town, year 2000. I've spent, like what, Brandon, about three on the current one. And I just want to say to you that these houses are totally antithetical to what we've been talking about. The materials are totally inappropriate for Carmel, because they're not natural. And we put a great stock in natural products and materials. There's a metal roof, which I've heard a lot of consternation on this commission, but no action about them. And the windows do not conform to what are typically a cottage style or a more country style like Carmel is and exemplifies. If these people lose their views, they have lost not just their view, but they've lost a tremendous amount of value in their property. Because if you talk to any realtor, they will tell you how much a view in this town is worth and add to their overall value, property value. My concern is that, and I agree with a lot of what Karen Sharp said and what's been said before, but to me, I'm really sorry to say this, but these houses look like barns. There's nothing distinguishing, nothing unique, nothing, nothing of Carmel in any of these three houses. They belong in Fresno. They belong someplace else, but they certainly don't belong here. And what these people are going to have to put up with is really tremendous. I mean, we've had, we've had construction around our house for a number of years, year after year after year, two houses at a time. This is going to be three, and it's going to be a nightmare. And because these houses, like I told you the last time I spoke to you, I really consider them a mini subdivision. These aren't individual distinguishable houses. These are, what is my point of view, having sat where you sat, I would consider 20 years ago when I was on the commission the same as I do today. It's totally inappropriate for Carmel. Put them someplace else, put them someplace else on the peninsula, but they don't fit here. And all we're doing is diminishing the value of our community that people love and respect. And people are commenting constantly about the fact that Carmel's changed, and they don't care to come back because of the changes. They don't see anything good about what's going on in these changes. So I just say to you that, you know, you mentioned diversity. There's no diversity in these three houses. The diversity we talked about and have talked about on the Design Traditions groups, talk about diversity within things that are complementary to Carmel. These, as far as I'm concerned, are not complementary, and they're not in the context of Carmel. They're not in the neighborhood context. And we've got all of these wonderful historic houses, and maybe-to-be historic houses, and all these three houses are, is a total and complete conflict with those. I mean, it's very jarring to even conceive of how these things are going to be built and work in that neighborhood. So I think you should do an initial study, since my point of view is that this is a mini subdivision in an area that is totally, totally devoid of this kind of development, and see where it goes. But please do listen to the neighborhood. After all, they're the ones that have to live here, and I'm sure these are all spec houses, and the one that the lady was just talking about is another one. So there's so much money to be made here, you have to listen to the residents, and developers and architects should come second. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Is anybody else in the chamber that wants to address the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, I'm going to call on Linda, you've got your hand up, you've been waiting patiently. You want to unmute yourself?
Yes, again, I just, Linda Smith here, just wanted to make a comment, listening to the neighbors there, just relating it to what's been going on in my neighborhood for years. I think there's hardly any peace and quiet in Carmel anymore, and many things have happened in my neighborhood to change its character, trees coming down, houses, you know, remodeled, out-of-town owners, no neighbors anymore, you know. Basically, it's dark all around us, and when there is an, I mean, when there is a development, we don't have much opportunity to come together to have a concerned conversation about it, and I'm really impressed with these neighbors who want to protect their neighborhood, and I cheer them on, because really, that's what community's all about, neighborhoods. But I thought I'd bring us back to this 2002 document from the Coastal Commission staff, because it's so illuminating. And it says, "Historically, most buildings in Carmel had simple forms and were relatively small in scale in relation to the size of their lots and natural surroundings. As reported in the city's Design Traditions project and confirmed in the commission's analysis of coastal development permit data, homes were small, one-to-one and one-and-a-half stories, averaging approximately 800 square feet to 1,500 square feet. Constructed primarily of wood, most had siding of shingle, vertical board and batten or horizontal platform, roofs were gabled and covered with shingles. Many could be considered vernacular rustic cabins, while others exhibit stylistic influences of the craftsman movement. The established character of Carmel can be described by the following. Architecture: variety of craftsman-style cottages. Size: smaller structures averaging approximately 1,200 square feet on 4,000-square-foot lots. Scale: small in relation to lot size and natural environment. Height: single-story cottages, often less than 18 feet. Setbacks: generous setbacks. Sensitivity: small cottages, often well-screened from streetscape. Streetscape: informal meandering roads, unimproved rights-of-way, often supporting trees and other vegetation. Natural environment: Monterey pine and coast live oak-dominated forest. Land use: primarily residential with a strong commercial core, several public parks, including 22 acres white sand beach and recreational bluff-top path. This is the context for Carmel's community life and its built character." This is from 2002. And then they say, "Much of the background text in the submitted LUP document is dedicated to describing the natural setting, subdivision patterns, layout of public roads, arrival of ohemians, and early architectural influences. It generally describes the turn-of-the-century cottages as simple modest homes set amidst a forest landscape. Recognizing that some amount of development or redevelopment of these small cottages will be necessary, the LUP maps a two-pronged strategy for dealing with historic resources and structures that are not historic, i.e. character resources." Character resources. Character resources will be handled through a process of conservation. That allows for new development and/or redevelopment, as long as it is consistent with the established character of the neighborhood. On page 22 of the land use plan, it states, "City implements conservation of its character through its design guidelines for the residential district, the commercial district, and the public way. The overall character of the city can be conserved through appropriate policies relating to the urbanized forest, roadway design, and building design." So you can see how long a struggle has been going on to try to preserve Carmel's character, and unfortunately, much of it has eroded. I've witnessed it, we've witnessed it, many old Carmel people have witnessed it, and it's very encouraging to see a neighborhood rise up and want to preserve its neighborhood character and that values the old Carmel character, which is so renowned throughout the world and such a joy to live in. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay. At this time, I invite the architect to come back and make his closing comments.
Thank you. That was a bit much. I think there was a little bit of, I have to say, a little bit of hysteria that was said by quite a few of these people. And I think...
Please, I'm sorry, please, please let him speak. Please, we listen to you, but let's let him speak.
Thank you. I have to say that, as I did my first presentation, these houses, all three, are designed to integrate with the forest, utilizing the design guidelines as principal design processes for the whole thing and initiating. I think people just simply don't understand what they're going to be getting. I mean, this meeting was, and there's plenty of people that like, you know, modern architecture in this town that aren't here today, that will probably want to show up for the next meeting. But these materials on all the houses are wood, are board and bat, wood windows, open to landscape, these are all natural materials. The one roof on Apuna has a metal roof for fire protection, I've already looked at. The one pitched roof on Kailaia will be more of a slate roof, so already creating more diversity, which was requested by the planning commission. I guess I'll just go back, but I think the way we've, there's never been a development in Carmel like this that so integrates landscape and design as a principal part. And I'll just also just say, you know, I have never done a spec building in my life. I've been working in this town for 35 years, I've been on the Historic Resources Board since probably the inception of the LUP or the LCP. I think I have a good understanding of what fits, and I simply think people are getting a little hysterical about what they think they're getting. They are going to have a beautiful, street-lined, very informal, simple forms, natural materials, beautiful landscape in the right of way and integrating into the site. It's really, I think, you know, they're going to be pleasantly surprised. I can promise them that. The detailing of this is, there's nothing to be, anything spared. It's, just because, you know, there's not ornaments like a French provincial home, doesn't mean there's not well-detailed, materials come together in beautiful ways. This is nothing like San Jose, this is nothing like Fresno, not even remotely. It's going to be very sensitive, modern houses, and you can see when you're out there how well these things kind of integrate, and the low profiles they are, certainly from the streets. So I think certainly the people on Mission will be very, very, very surprised by how beautiful this will be. I guess I'll go back to some of the initial speakers, there was the sequel arguments, I'll just simply mention that these are all developed sites, and we are proposing houses that meet all the development standards, I would argue, meet all the design guidelines, and there's really, we've mitigated the impacts to the neighbors, I think you all are used to, addressing different issues with, what is an impact and what is not a significant impact. I think we completely reduced the height of Apuna to really allow the views. One window is, which is unavoidably covered, because we're trying to save the light and air from the upper-level spaces. Again, the other houses to the eats are very far setback from that, and they are, they do see a roof, but I don't think that's a significant impact, as I mentioned before. I think, you know, there are some comments about how things are plastic. There's nothing artificial or unnatural about any of the materials we're using. You can make an argument for and against metal roofs, but again, only one of the houses in this project would have that. So I go through the different comments. You know, I think what's sad, you see a lot of Carmel, is just these kind of spec-developed cookie cutter houses, and I feel like at some point, you know, when you do something sensitively, like we're proposing, when we utilize the design guidelines to make something special, to make something that's out of the, I would argue, the artistic tradition of Carmel, making something special, like you see the Three Sisters on Lopez, and special houses that are unique. Each one of these is very unique and specific, designed around the landscape, just as the design guidelines proposed. I feel like there's just a significant misunderstanding of what these will be. And I think going before you at the final details meeting, I'll provide more drawings, more articulations of what these buildings are, and I certainly would like to try to be convincing to the neighborhood as well. I think, obviously, most of this, in my opinion, is the fact that they're three having, happening at once, and this is creating a lot of disturbance for their, or anxiety for the neighborhood, I understand that. And I agreed with Commissioner Karpetovkov that it's, you know, having the one contractor is, and the coordination of that is going to make it a lot better, and we're happy to really get detailed into how these processes would happen. Just going back to what Melanie Billig mentioned, you know, there's no views being lost, except from one side window of a house. There's, I would, there are some, you do see the roof, that's what you see from the side, but I don't think those are significantly bad. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we tried to be very sensitive to and respect what we heard at the last meeting, listening to all of you and to some of the neighbors as well. And I think these are very special, unique projects for Carmel, and I think Carmel would be very proud to have them once they're done. I just think there's a big misunderstanding of what these will be. And again, at the next, final details meetings and things, there'll be a lot more detail about what we're trying to do, and what, you know, how truly, I think, amazing these projects will be. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call a recess for 10 minutes, and we will reconvene in, well, say, 20 F. Okay? Get an even number. Get an even number.
Yes.
Commissioner Dellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerpetovkov.
Yes.
And Chair LaPage.
Yes. Okay, we're all here. All right. I think everyone had a chance to make their comments, so I'm going to close the public hearing, now I'm going to open it up to the planning commissioners for their discussion. And Commissioner Dellis, would you like to begin?
I'll just start by saying thank you for coming, this is awesome.
How's that, better?
Better.
Thank you for coming. This is awesome, to have a turnout like this at a planning commission meeting on any topic, frankly. You know, I've been doing this for four years, and we've never really had this level of interest, especially in a, on a residential, single-family, or multiple single-family homes at all. A reminder again is, this isn't you versus us, we are your neighbors. We all volunteered for various reasons. I know I volunteered because I was concerned about the architectural character of our community. I got a feeling that's true for everybody that sits up here. Michael's been doing this for 20 years, and I think he has done, single-handedly, a remarkable job of preserving the architectural character of Carmel. We make mistakes, and those are subjective, they're often very subjective. I can tell you that I've got five houses in a row behind me that have been under construction. Three of them were done by a single builder, was a spec builder. They're pretty homes, but I've had five years of, that one's four years of construction. And actually, that approval was the primary thing that motivated me to come here. It turned out okay. I've got another one behind me that is massive and includes an ADU, from the previous conversation, it's oversized, and the one next to that has been on, has got their building permit in 2018. So it's five in a row, and I've seen it. You've got one next to you.
I've got two.
The next topic up here is next to Michael. So, you know, we're impacted by all the same things that you are. As to your letter, I just got it, we all did, and I'm not sure why that is, but I think a paper copy came in yesterday, we didn't get an electronic copy, I have it here, so I haven't even had a chance to read it. One of the things that, so what we do every month, for five to 10 hours a month, plus an equal amount of time preparing, is review mostly applications for residential redevelopment. Sometimes that's demolition and construction, often it's just remodels, but any project where the exterior of the home is being affected in really almost any way, but especially a significant way, has to come through the planning commission. And then it's our job to apply, to make sure first, working with staff, that the code, and the code is objective, the code is black and white, that the code is being followed. And then the second thing is that the design standards that were written 20 years ago, Melanie was here before, she was part of the group that wrote those, and that's the subjective part, and those, that's the tool we have that allows us to be subjective and make interpretations of whether the proposal is in fitting with Carmel. And that's a very, it's really complicated to get there. It also gives us the tools to look after views, open space, air circulation, solar access, all those things, again, subjective evaluations. And every month, we go out to people, just like we did, you all saw us out there the last two months, we go out and look at every single project, and then if the neighbors will allow us, we'll go into their homes and try to assess what that orange netting looks like to them. But one of the real challenges we have is, is one of our subjective items is, is this development consistent with the neighborhood? And I know we have all of our own way of doing that, I just usually walk the neighborhood, and I have a rendering of something that's not built yet, and try to figure out, oh, is this going to fit in with this neighborhood, is it going to be a blemish on the neighborhood? Hard to do. The beauty of tonight is the neighborhood actually talked to me through your voices, and that doesn't ever happen. And I think we got to listen to you. So Eric, I think you got to read the room, and I would suggest that dismissing the concerns of this many people and this many neighbors as, you know, they just don't get it, is a little tone deaf, and I really would encourage you, at this point, I think you have to convene a gathering of your neighbors. I mean, 62 of them just signed something that said no. And I think you got to start over here. And there's, this group has raised, I'll say, at least 12 different objections, some of which you cannot overcome. You know, the construction management, as an example, is a challenge, it's a real challenge, but you can come up with a construction management plan. But I think specifically with the design, I think that this neighborhood is saying that they don't like your design, and I have to listen to that, because that's important to me. So my suggestion to my colleagues would be, I'm going to kind of leave it to you, what you want to come back with. I am not prepared to approve the application before us, which, to be clear, what is before us is concept, and the way this works is, anything that comes through as, comes first through as a concept, and secondly, as a final. And concept has gotten, over the years, because of the tools that architects have, concept has become pretty thorough in terms of what they're showing us, but really, the way concept is written is mostly mass and scale, and a lot of times, at the concept phase, we're not getting into all the fine details of the finish. Right? So, you know, in Eric's defense, he's given us concept, he's giving us mass and scale and a sense of what these buildings would look like. The final details would have all come back to us at final. But I'm not prepared to go forward with Apuna, so at best, I would continue it, if not deny it, and we'll see what these guys want to do. I think you have, I just think you got to do this, do-over, and include the community. I do want to just briefly address Sequa, because Chuck and Arlene have been showing up at a lot of meetings, just making the comment that our government is not adequately or appropriately utilizing Sequa, and I'm a software developer, I don't know anything about Sequa, right? And so I defer to staff on Sequa matters, because I couldn't debate whether it's the right thing to do or not. We have asked staff to get better education on Sequa, and they've committed to doing that. But I do think it's become increasingly important, and especially to this group of people, to understand how Sequa will be applied and the timing of it. I don't believe you can start applying Sequa before you've finished a concept, because you don't know what you're applying it to. And once you've gotten through that, okay, then you've got, you can't apply Sequa to something that has no substance. So you have to get to the substance first, I get that part of it, and then you begin the process. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Commissioner Allen, your comments, please.
Yeah, so I agree with what Commissioner Dellis has said, and he's said it very well, and I just wanted to add that, you know, our job is difficult, because we don't, we don't have control over the designs that come forward, and a lot of designs that come forward are what some of you in the room would consider as modern. And I think Chair LaPage has said over and over and very well, and it, there's, there's a lot of aspects to this in terms of, like, the materials and the details and what goes into making that unique character that we're used to. And then also, having it subordinate to the forest is my main concern when I look at a project. And so, so tonight, I will not be... And so, so tonight, I will not be approving Hapuna. I appreciate everyone's comments. And, and I think that Eric does need to go back and listen and redesign. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Kerbikoff?
Yes, so the, our role here is really to find this balance between the desire of architects to innovate, and we have heard this argument many times, not just by architects, by many members of the community, that we want to have creative forces in Carmel, and that that's one of the unique characteristics of Carmel, is that innovation, new ideas, new designs have been implemented. And there are numerous examples about that. So that's on the one side. And on the other side, we have this charter and desire to protect the community character. Now, different parts of Carmel have different sensitivity to innovation, I have noticed. For example, the part of town where I live, is probably more close to the Mission, is probably more room for innovation there. We're kind of on the border to the county, so some of the designs get approved by the county, some by the city, so there's a little bit of a mix. Carmel Point, bigger lots, different kind of style, different kind of houses. So it's more, I would say, it's easier to innovate, and if you make a mistake, it's not going to be that bad. But in downtown, in the areas where we have the 4,000 square lot, square feet lots, that is obviously a different dynamic. And as Commissioner Dels mentioned, that's the first time we get such a strong reaction to a project in Carmel. And it's a learning experience for us, too, that there are certain blocks and pockets in the city where there is a lot of resistance to particular designs. And I think that we should listen to that and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to thank all of you for your comments. Some of you think we don't listen to you, but we do. And I think you hear that from the comments here, from the commissioners. I think there's some work that needs to be done here, between the neighborhood and the applicant. That's pretty clear. When you have this many people that aren't happy, there needs to be more, an opportunity for more communication. You know, some, I think some simple direction things would be for the architect to think seriously about a single story instead of that two-story. And I think that that takes away just one of the things that are causing a lot of impacts. As far as the, the design of the project, Eric is a very experienced architect. He lives here. He is a very thoughtful architect. This is a very thoughtful project. You may not personally like the architecture, and I totally understand that. There are people that have a certain view of what Carmel homes should be. But what we try to do in this town is to allow for creativity, because otherwise, you just become a theme park. You know? So we're trying to allow the ability of designers and architects and homeowners to design homes which are representative of their tastes, their lifestyle, and what is allowed, the standards on that lot. And we want them, as a review body, we want them to mitigate or not have impacts on you, the neighbors, in terms of your light, your views, and also the character of your neighborhood. And I understand about construction. We have just had this endless wave of construction going on in this town. You know, we're a postage stamp of world desirability. You know? The people that bought houses here, we've all benefited, because we've got these houses which are worth unbelievable amounts of money. And that is bringing a lot of interest in terms of, you know, making money off this place. And I, and I, you know, one of the neighbors is a realtor, and I, I mean, I'm sure we could have a real long discussion about that. But, you know, all we can really do is require a construction management program and hope that a good contractor comes in and really is sensitive to the neighbors and works out the noise and the, you know, the parking problems, because they're really extreme. We just have these really narrow streets, you know, and there's, there's just really bad, bad opportunities for, you know, good parking and mitigation. So we do try to work that out with good construction plans, you know, management plans. But I think the problem here is, I mean, I understand you're concerned about what's going to happen in the future, but the real problem here is, the neighbors are real concerned about the character of the neighborhood and the impacts, really, of that second story. So as Commissioner Dels said, I think what I'm going to recommend is we continue this project, this particular application, give the architect an opportunity to work on the design, to mitigate the impacts to the immediate neighbors, and then to maybe have some communication with the neighbors and get together and try to, try to, you know, work out what's going to be something that's acceptable to everybody. Because the way this is heading now, I mean, the neighbors, you just seem like you're really angry. And, you know, and I don't want that to happen. I don't want, I've seen projects here where neighbors have gotten so angry that they've actually, there's been police calls, and then the people have sold houses. I mean, I've seen this happen. I've been on this commission long enough to see that happen. And, and I'm really, it's really a failure of communication and stuff. People have to be willing to work together, though, that's the other thing I want to say. You have to be willing to work together, you know? You have to acknowledge that, you know, that they've got property here and they have a right to build something on it and do something. But they don't have a right to, you know, create impacts to you that are, that are really destroying your quality of life. And I understand that. You know, this is, that's a big, you know, this is where we live, you know? This is, this is our quality of life, you know? And as Ken White likes to say, you know, you know, the culture here, well, we are the culture, you know? We are, you know, the people who live here right now, and so we all contribute to that. And I know that Eric, he's totally aware of that, and he's, he has a vision for architecture, a creative vision. He's done a very thoughtful plan here. He really has. So I think there's a real opportunity here to work with him. And I know Eric is a very, very reasonable person who will listen. So let's just give this some time, you can get together with neighbors, I mean, maybe the neighbors get organized and present some ideas to try to work through it, you know, what they'd like to see happen. You know, like I said, it seems like the second story is not going to work, that neighborhood there. You know? So let's, let's kind of go in that direction and take this time with the continues to, you know, to kind of work this out and, and come to, you know, work something out that everybody's going to, can live with. And, and also, when they get done, you know, the project is an asset to the neighborhood, and really, you know, does continue that quality of life that we just all, you know, love so much about living in this area, and we're so fortunate to have. So with that said, I want to make a motion that we continue this project to a date uncertain. And...
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerbikoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Okay. How are you doing on time?
Let's go.
You okay?
Yeah.
Michael's got to recuse himself. I do. And I'm going to turn the chair over to Commissioner Dels. I'm going to recuse myself on the next item, which is item number six on the public hearing. So I will leave the room. All right. This is Brandon.
The textbook that the booker that you gave me, day one, remember?
Yeah.
It's cool.
Good job.
I have the second one.
Can you grab your one?
I do. Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to move along here. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item number six, Roland Smith, consideration of a final design study, DS 24175, an associated coastal development permit for the construction of a 708-square-foot split-level addition to an existing 852-square-foot one-story, single-family residence and 240-square-foot garage, and associated site improvements at 4910 Monterey Street in the single-family residential district. Staff report, please.
Thank you. I'm going to be presenting the next item on behalf of Catherine Wallace. So bear with me while we get the presentation.
Steve, can you flip over to the presentation, please? Thank you.
All right. So before you is a final design study for the Roland Smith project located at 4910 Monterey Street. So just a little background, this is a 4,000-square-foot lot. The existing residence is a little over 1,000 square feet, and they are proposing a total of 1,800 square feet with significant reduction in site coverage. So the planning commission accepted the concept design with conditions, and so I'm going to go through what those conditions were and how the applicant has responded to them. The first being changing the rear balcony railing from glass to more solid for privacy for the west neighbor. The applicant has proposed a horizontal louvered design for that deck railing. Planning commission also asked for the three doors leading out to the balcony to be replaced with a single door and fewer windows, and that change also has been made. And then third, to propose a landscape privacy screen along the rear fence line, again, for the purposes of protecting privacy between the property, the project site, and the west So I'm going to skip over the forest character, because I believe we, oh, actually, maybe I'm not. So the project does have a requirement to plant two upper or lower canopy trees. The applicant is proposing two new olive trees to satisfy this requirement, and all construction will be a minimum of six feet from significant trees. This shows the location of the two proposed olive trees, one in each corner at the rear of the lot. So no changes to the building and roof form from the concept hearing, and no changes to the east facade, or the south elevation, or the north elevation. So focusing in on that west rear elevation where the second-story balcony is proposed, you can see the concept design in the photo at the top, and the glass panel railing that was originally proposed, and then the horizontal louvered design that has replaced those glass panels, again, to provide for that privacy. The, two of the three doors originally proposed have been converted to windows. So again, that, that special condition was addressed. And then just a couple notes with respect to privacy. This graphic here kind of shows the setback from the neighbor to the west. There is a change in topography, so the west neighbor does sit a little bit lower than the project site. There is an existing six-foot solid fence between the two properties. The commission could also consider, if you felt further privacy mitigation was necessary, increasing the height of that fence. Under the zoning code, an additional one foot of lattice is allowed, sort of by right. Anything taller than that is within the purview of the planning commission to decide if that's warranted. This is a photograph that was provided by the west neighbor. I believe she was planning to attend online, but if she was not able to attend, she wanted to make sure that we provided this photograph from her rear yard, so the commission could see the story poles again from her vantage point. Fenestration and finish details. Sorry, I don't have that. Okay, so all finishes and materials are proposed to match the existing residence, which has horizontal wood siding in an off-white color. The roof, it looks like a composition shingle with aluminum gutters and new aluminum-clad wood windows by Sierra Pacific. The applicant did provide a lighting plan. It included a number of light fixtures. Staff is recommending that the total number of fixtures be reduced, and has included a special condition to address that. So the residential design guidelines state that the purpose of landscape lighting is to illuminate walkways and entrances, and so staff's recommended condition is based on this section of the code. The applicant is proposing two compliant entry lights, one at the front door and one at the easternmost side door, as well as a light over the garage. The front path lights are spaced 10 feet apart, and no lights on the fencing deck or rear patio. May apologize if I butchered that. With regards to fencing, the applicant is proposing to keep two of the existing fences, which are slightly different in style. They're also proposing two new fences, which are also slightly different in style. So staff just wanted to bring to the commission's attention that there is some inconsistencies in the style of fences around the property, due in part to wanting to retain some of the existing fencing that is there. So the special conditions of approval that staff is recommending include our standard construction management plan, the balcony privacy rail. So if the commission is satisfied that the sort of louvered design meets the direction of a solid wood railing, that is set forth here in the condition. Of course, you can also modify that condition as appropriate. And then number 35 regarding the exterior lighting plan, basically reducing the total number of exterior light fixtures. So staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the final design study with conditions. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Can you go back to the slide where it's looking from the perspective of the neighbor up toward the netting? Okay. So fence height isn't going to, to do anything? Is this from there, is this a, like a patio area?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah. I looked, she was back there last time, and I kind of looked over, and she got a little patio there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So there is some landscaping proposed along the fence line. What you see there, I believe, are the plants currently in their containers.
We saw them today.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we saw it.
Perfect.
Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome.
Does the applicant would like to come forward?
Maybe about two hours ago. Okay, so where do I start? Well, we passed the volumetric study, which I was a little concerned about. I think one thing that helped us was the fact that it's hip roofs and not gables everywhere, because that, you know, you're missing that extra bit that goes on. In terms of creating the privacy that's been asked for, you did ask for a solid rail. I tried to come up with a solution that I thought was more aesthetically appealing, cuts off the view, so I don't know, maybe, maybe this is good to put up on. cuts off the view, so I don't know, maybe, maybe this is good to put up on. The louver, wood louvers would prohibit view looking down through that to anything below. And it also would disallow view coming from below looking up in the same way. So they'd be kind of like evenly spaced, the top of one to be even with the bottom of the other, therefore, you could only look up. But what it would do, certain times of the day, my client Stephen is quite a sun lover and he really likes the western light, so this would allow light to kind of channel through at times of the day and he wouldn't be totally cut off by a solid rail. We did reduce the number of doors on the backside of the bedroom. And there is a proposal to do a planted screen. And I agree with all of that. It, you know, privacy works both ways and these people are sensitive to their privacy just as much as the west neighbor. So it's kind of like, good for everybody, I think. So any questions for me?
Do you have questions?
No.
Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any member of the public that would like to address us? No?
We do have the, the landscape designer is here too, so he can probably explain the privacy.
I think we'll just, if we have questions about the landscape, otherwise I think we're, we're okay. Anybody else, do we have anybody online? All right, then I'm going to close public comment. Commissioners?
Commissioner Allen. Okay. Okay, so I would like a different choice of, of a privacy screen, one that our forester verifies will grow taller than six feet. I realize that even though the one that they already have looks like it's growing past six feet, if our forester is saying that they usually just go, grow around six feet, then I'd like to get something that grew, grew taller. The other thing is that if we can, if we can do the lattice at seven, an additional foot in the, along the back fence without a problem, I would recommend that. And otherwise, I think I'm good with all of the changes that have been done and ready to move forward with just some privacy issues in the back.
Yeah, no, no further comments, no.
Great, I have no further comments, so I'm looking at the resolution. I think, did we need to, oh, first off, the lever solution I think is great, so, well done. I think we should add a condition 36 regarding the vegetative, vegetative privacy screen in the rear, that it needs to be planted with something that will achieve 10 feet or more in height. I know the owner had suggested that you might put three olive trees back there.
Yeah.
Four olive trees?
Oh, yeah.
So that, that will probably, that's great, and you'll love the olive trees. So we're going to add a, a condition that says four olive trees in the back. And I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Doss?
Yes.
And Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yes. So to be clear, because I'm sorry, that was a motion to approve the resolution as provided by staff with the addition of condition 36 to place four olive trees on the west border. That, that's what that motion was.
That's good. And that was the one that I seconded.
Yeah. All right.
You guys really nailed that.
Did we?
Yeah. That's great.
That was exciting.
Well, that was easy.
Thanks for hanging out.
Thank you.
Shelby, you poke your head out there and tell Michael we're ready for him, please. Just right around the corner. Thank you.
All right. We're losing him, we're losing him.
We're losing him now?
Yeah, my son's flying in and maybe not.
Pretty good.
Monterey?
You see how fast?
Good.
Monterey's the best.
Yeah, it is.
You see how fast? I know, I was impressed, boy.
Show off.
I was like right in the middle of something and I had to quit.
I think it's an unfair playing field a little bit, but.
Yeah, it's the easiest thing in the agenda. And he's just bragging.
Look how easy his job is.
Yeah.
Plus, he's going to be out of here too, he's exerting us.
I know.
So we have two of them.
It's an emergency, I believe.
Okay. All right, that brings us to item number seven on the public hearing's agenda. This is another design study, DS 23-249. It's 1540 Mescal Street LLC. This is consideration of final design study and associated coastal development permit for a one-story, single-family residence and detached accessory building and the construction of a 1,703 square foot, two-story residence inclusive of a, inclusive of a 200 square foot attached garage. Can we have staff report, please?
Can you change the screen to the PowerPoint?
Pardon?
I was talking to the video person downstairs. We need the, ah, there we go.
Oh, here we go.
Okay. Just quick background, some minor changes from last time. The square, the site coverage has been reduced from 460 or so square feet down to 400. Everything else is remaining the same. This is a 4,000 square foot lot, 3,000 square foot of buildable area and about 900 so lost to steep slopes. There's two conditions that were added to the concept at the last hearing, and that was to remove the deck slash patio at the north side of the property and to add more vegetative screening to the northern property line. And the applicant has addressed both concerns and done just that. As you can see, the deck patio at the north side has been removed and there's no doors or windows there. This is an area that was, there was concerns about privacy and views into the neighbor's house. You can see the rendering's a bit updated too, so you can just get a little bit of a better view of how that section of the house will no longer have the patio. Here is from the landscape plan. These are the proposed plantings to create vegetative screening. Those sevens would be strawberry trees, I believe, and the eights, a different type of tree. I can't remember off the top of my head what the, those are, but they're planning to put trees there for screening for the neighbors to address the concerns. Here is the finished details for it. It's going to be stucco siding painted this eggshell color. There'll be four-foot grapestick fence in the front and a six-foot redwood fence at the sides of the property. Barrel clay tile roof, caramel stone for the patio and for the walkway, and calstone for the driveway. There's going to be wood-clad windows and downward shielded lighting that all complies and iron guard rails to match the Spanish Revival style. My recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the final design study and coastal development permit.
Okay, any questions for staff?
The neighbor to the north, any, any objection to the changes?
Not that I've heard. They did ask me to let them know when the plans were posted online. I let them know and I haven't heard from them. I believe I saw that they were online on Zoom, so they may have comments, but.
Okay, great.
I didn't hear any objections during, when I, when I talked to them. Nope, there you go.
Okay, yeah, they're there, all right. Would the applicant like to come forward, make their presentation?
Good evening, Chair LaPage and members of the planning commission. Claudio Ortiz representing Joshua and Cheryl for my, on my project. Thank you, Jacob, for the presentation. I think he pretty much explained pretty much everything on the materials that we're proposing. A pretty straightforward project, I believe. Spanish barrel tile, plaster siding, wood-clad windows. You know, I think we can go over those details if you have more questions. I mean, mainly what we did is we were able to remove the patio balcony on the side of the property as suggested, and we omitted the windows. In addition to that, we also added the three layers of landscaping. The primary layer is, and I'm horrible with plants and names, so that's not my expertise, but all I know is that we're proposing three layers of landscaping like I proposed. The first layer is shrub or more like a hedge that would grow about 15 feet tall and that will, in my opinion, the goal was to create a hedge that will provide not only privacy but, you know, stop the, the sound to go through. And then I added a second layer of landscaping to soften the sound as people talk from the patios and balcony, and then a tertiary set of plants to, you know, again, soften the voice sound traveling down the hill. So the landscaper, I think, did a good job selecting the plans for that. And I did see the neighbor here a minute ago. He did say he was in support of the project, but obviously they can, you know, speak and make their own comments, but I believe we addressed all the issues that were brought up and I'm hoping that I can obtain an approval on this project and move to construction. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Claudio? Okay, thank you.
We have something that isn't on.
Yeah, we have one.
Yeah, is anybody here in the chamber that wanted to speak to this project? So would you, I can't see him, but whoever who's got their hand up, you have the floor?
Um.
There you go.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I apologize. My husband had to leave and I'm out of the country, so I dialed in. I am the neighbor to the north and I, I'm happy, we're both happy with the changes. Just wanted to speak up and say that. It looks like the hedges are potticarpus and that's the sevens and eights are strawberry bush or strawberry tree and that all looks good to us. So we appreciate the changes and just wanted to make that noted.
Thank you. Okay, I guess that's all the public comments, so close the public hearing. Public comments and any comments from you, Commissioner Allen?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Hello.
Yeah, I know, right? Okay, so thank you very much for making the changes and accommodating the neighbors to the north. And for the neighbors to the north, thank you so much for coming back and circling back with us and letting us know that that is going to work for you. And I am good to go with this project.
Okay, and Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yeah, same here. Very happy with the changes. It's a good project. If the neighbor on, on the north side is, is happy with the changes, I'm good with it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the, I'm in total agreement and I appreciate the architect's ability to accommodate the neighbors and I'm sure the neighbors do too. All right, we have a resolution. I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution as presented by staff with the special conditions, which are pretty, there's nothing really unusual about the conditions, just a agreement to the conditions, no copper gutters, downspouts, and a construction management plan.
I can second.
Two seconds. All right, roll call.
That's right.
Oh, I have to say, yes, we're done.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, thank you. Motion carried. Okay. Yeah, where, hey, where's Bob now? Huh?
Right.
Yeah, huh? I think that was.
This is being reported.
I think that was a record, yeah.
Steve, we're going to have a presentation.
I'm going to make him watch that. All right, that brings us to item number eight. That's another design study, DS 23211, the Hindley family LP. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair LaPage. So the next item before you is a final design study for the Hindley residence, which is on Mission Street to southeast of 13th. Quick background, this is a standard 4,000 square foot lot. It contains an existing 680 square foot, single-story residence. The home was constructed in 1947. There was a small addition in 1949. A carport was added in 1950 and that carport is accessed off of Rio Road. The carport was converted to a garage in 1957. So the applicant is proposing to demolish more than 50% of the exterior walls. They are proposing to retain the north wall as well as the brick chimney. The project includes one and two-story additions totaling a little over 1,500 square feet and reconstruction of the detached garage with a smaller footprint at 200 square feet. So the planning commission accepted the concept design on August 14th with a couple of conditions. One, to complete the volume study. The project did pass volume. The next condition was to simplify the roof form, also simplify the windows and the wall cladding. So this is a comparison of the existing residence on the left. The first concept is on top and the revised concept is on the bottom. As you can see from this front elevation, which faces west, no changes there. On the south elevation, you can see the, the change in the exterior materials. So on the, I'm sorry, I think I had it backwards. The, I apologize. So on this slide, the original concept design is on the bottom. And I apologize, the revised is on top. So you can see in the image on the top, there's a consistent horizontal wood siding throughout the home. The applicant would like to retain that stone wainscoting, which is, it kind of frames their, their south patio and is behind a fence, so it can't be seen from the, from the street. This is that east elevation, which is the back of the house facing Rio Road. Again, what you really see is that consistency in the materials throughout the residence. And then the north elevation, which had that glass block. I apologize, my images are flip-flopping, but that original concept design is now on top. Just checking to make sure you're all still awake. The revised concept is on the bottom. So the applicant has reduced the size of the windows, created more uniformity within the windows. And then as you'll note on this elevation, those awning windows at the second floor were eliminated as well as the awning windows there at the first floor. Okay. So this is final details, so we'll go through the colors and materials. Again, the, the applicant is proposing the painted horizontal wood siding, which would match what is currently on the front elevation of the home. The windows and doors would be painted wood. The deck railing would also be wood. The roof material is composition shingle. The existing brick fireplace would be painted and they are proposing a solid core wood garage door. You can also see here some images of their light fixtures, very simple, like a path, path light, step light, and then their wall-mounted fixture, both of which comply with our lighting standards. So staff's recommendation is that you approve the final design study with conditions. Some of these special conditions are now becoming quite standard. This project includes a pre-construction meeting, so staff can meet with the contractor at the beginning of the project. Also, no copper gutters and downspouts, submission of a construction management plan. And then the. And then the, one unique aspect of this project that we had talked about at concept is that access to the garage off of Rio Road does traverse to other properties. The owners have been seeking easements from both of those property owners. They had secured one before the concept review and they are moving forward with securing the second one. So they will have proper access to their new garage. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Questions for staff? No questions, thank you, Marty. Okay, is the applicant or the applicant's representative here?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. From our last hearing, we took your recommendations and, you know, we had more material, you know, we had the shingles and we had the glass block exterior, so we simplified it. It's all horizontal siding now. We got rid of the glass block and we simplified the window patterns and the windows. And we used to have a lot of horizontal windows over the bedrooms and we took those out. And I think you can see with just the horizontal siding that really kind of cleaned up the project and made the forms kind of more simple and more relevant. The other thing we did was, there was some discussion about the garage height being too tall, so we were able to drop that height one foot, so let's drop that as well. So if you have any questions.
Any questions for the architect? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Don't see anybody here, except the next applicant. And no hands up online? I'm not missing anything there? Okay, close the public comments, open up the commission, comments.
Yes. Thank you so much. The changes are fantastic and I love how it corresponds with the original 1940 look of the front of the house. So great job. I am completely happy with this and want to move forward.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yeah, and I'm very happy with the changes on the windows, especially on the north elevation. It looks wonderful. Yeah, thanks for doing that. No further comments.
Yeah, I'm, I was really impressed. I mean, you really took our comments and, you know, and I think it looks better. I mean, I don't want to diss your first design, but you really, you really kind of pulled it together on the second design, it looks great, so thank you so much. So we have a resolution. I don't think we need to make any changes. I mean, I can make the resolution as per staff's presentation.
And I can second that.
Okay, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes. Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you for waiting around.
Yeah, thank you for your, thank you for your patience. Okay, that brings us to the last item on the public hearing, number nine. This is a design review, 24196, the Comfort Inn. Consideration of track one design review for a black shingle roof, composite shingle roof. A staff report, please.
Thank you. It's, the Comfort Inn Carmel is on an 8,400 square foot lot. There's existing cedar wood shake roof. It was determined not to be historic in October of this year. This is the existing roof. The proposed is the charcoal black presidential TL certintied composite shingles. The Carmel municipal code requires roofing materials to be consistent with the design character of the building. And the Carmel commercial design guidelines, the building materials and colors should represent the traditions of the commercial district. They want to see wood, tile, moldings, corbels, bricks, stone. So as you can see, here's a picture of a roof that's in downtown that is more earth toned. Here's some more of the gray terracotta tiles, clay tiles. Here are two black composite shingle roofs that were provided as examples by the applicant of the style of roof they'd be wanting to install at the Comfort Inn. So with that, staff recommends the commission adopt the resolution, accepting the design review with a condition to replace the proposed shingles with something in earth tone. If the commission finds that the black composite shingles meets the design standards, then we can strike that condition and accept the project as is.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff? Questions? Okay. Thank you. The applicant want to make your presentation?
Thank you for having us, commissioners and employees. I appreciate you guys and we learned a lot today. What a day to come out here. Well, the reason why we're here today is I know the color says black, but this is more of a charcoal color, which enlightens even more as it weathers. And so what we did today is I brought here a sample. This is a fairly new sample board, so it hasn't been weathered. And as you guys can see, it does have a shadowing of gray. By the way, the name of this color is charcoal black, so it is of a gray color. We have done buildings here in downtown, as a matter of fact, hotels and cottages and other local businesses here, just around the corner and down the street from us here in this particular color.
Green leather.
Yeah. So with that said, the material that's on there right now is a firefree. And firefree, that material is actually a really dark color that was on there. But what firefree does is, one of their biggest mistakes that firefree made, which is the material that's on there, is it's a cementatious product with a recycled cardboard meshed in. It did not hold its color. It faded into the color that it is right now. That color was of a dark, really dark toned brown. So when you go out there and you see some of those broken pieces, you can really see that darker color down below. Removing, removing that firefree roof and installing something of a, I guess we can say a little bit of a darker shade color, I don't think it's going to affect how it looks. If you guys are looking at the hotel here, the roof is only about 25% of the curb appeal of this place. Can barely see the roof because of its low slope, so it's about a four and 12, a little bit under a four and 12, I believe. That's what I've got for you guys.
Can you show the whole piece of the sample, please?
Yes.
I have a, so I.
For price for being here all day.
Yeah, right. I do have a question though, why black or why charcoal black?
It's actually a color scheme of the hotels. Yeah, I know. So they've, they've been moving over to a dark tone, a dark black in most of their facilities.
On their trim?
No.
Oh, are you talking about like Comfort Inn as an, as a, as a company?
Correct. Some of them have been changing over to the dark colored tones and that's why the owner is persistent to keep.
So it's a company, they're trying to get a consistent image?
Correct.
Oh, I see. Yeah, we don't like that. We don't like that. I'm sorry.
I heard and I.
We're like anti corporate, sorry.
And it's.
What, can I, maybe to get you all some clarification, because I just asked Jake, perhaps you could clarify, because this, the picture up there right now is the current color scheme.
Mm-hmm.
And is there, because we, I don't believe we received an application for repainting or color change. Is there any plan to do that or is this going to be the color that remains of the entire building?
No, this is going to be the color that remains.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, this is the picture of the Comfort Inn?
Yeah.
Correct.
And so the, they have the blue doors and the body is some kind of an off white and then they've got this gray trim?
Right.
Yeah, it's more of a darker gray, almost matching the roof system.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I just want to compare it, I have some samples here. I want to compare it with other.
Will you bring your own samples?
Yeah, I have, in my garage, I have.
Wow. You put roof sign in your spare time?
Yeah.
Can I ask?
So this is, this is not the same manufacturer, but this is called, is that the Mission, the Mission Brown that I have on my house?
Is this the same product?
Stonewood and black oak. And I have, the one I have on my house is here, it's called Mission Brown.
Is this the same product?
No, it's GAF.
Oh, okay.
It's presidential, it's the same thickness.
Oh, okay.
It's the heavy laminated.
Was there a second choice color?
I can't prepare.
You were very adamant about. I thought it was dark, but Kara Petkoff today. It was pretty dark. But kind of brownish. Yeah, it's darker.
Yeah, it is.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we need to come up here to do it. Because it needs to be on the record.
We still record. So would they have to like get a permit to paint the doors and trim and, I mean, I don't know, because I'm not a painter.
Yeah, technically, yes. The answer is yes. You have to, it's a, it's a staff level approval, but it's basically a scope of work. We make sure that you're not going to paint it, you know, like zebra striped or, you know, polka dots or something like that, because we do have a color palette.
I'll be honest, the owner has mentioned to me, they do want to change like the color of the doors and.
Sure. Which is fine, yeah. The reason I ask the question is because part of their calculation is, does the roof play well with the building too? They need to think about that as well.
Well, in my opinion, black goes with everything, but.
I sure.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I, do you have any more comments?
No, that was pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody in the chamber. Nobody online. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open up to the commissioners. Mr. Kara Petkoff, you brought your own sample, so I'm going to let you go.
I, I think black roof, in the example that we saw, this Stillwater Hotel is like black on white, right? Black roof, white, pretty white walls. And this is, this kind of contrast, we really don't encourage in town. So I would prefer if the, you know, the roof is much more what stuff called a major color, right?
Yeah, earth tones.
Earth tones. And there are plenty, every manufacturer, certain teat or GAF or any manufacturer has different flavors.
Do you have, you have the other colors there?
A little grayish.
Yeah, I actually have these colors and the reason why I did bring a brochure, these brochures are Xedoff. Why? There is an extreme shortage of materials right now. I've lost almost 75% of my colors that I can install right now due to shortage.
So what do you got left?
I've got what's called an autumn blend, our charcoal and our country gray, which is super light. You guys can see in here. And our shadow gray is just.
Yeah, I think.
Almost the same color.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. How did those other, how did Stillwell get the black shingles?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Well, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, this, this planning commission approved it.
I don't want you to self-incriminate yourself.
No, I'm not going to incriminate myself. It was the planning commission.
The planning commission did that?
Approved that, yeah.
We approved that?
Yes, sir.
So as you guys can see, the colors that.
Paying attention, remember.
Are probably not going to match what the building, what they're looking for.
Oh, I disagree. Oh, what they're looking for, oh, sorry, well, yeah.
Which, I mean, it's completely up to your guests' decision. I just wanted to point out that shortage there.
Yeah, I mean, what we've been trying to avoid is this high contrast, because we're getting a lot of black, you know, white houses, white, white with black trim and it just doesn't really, it's not supported by our residential or our commercial guidelines, which suggests natural tones, you know, which kind of reflect our natural environment here.
If it doesn't work with this manufacturer, you can try GAF. They manufacture in Southern California and it costs 600 bucks to get a truck here. So they can ship it directly from manufacturing here for 600 bucks. I did that because the distributor said, it's not available, you cannot get it, it's discontinued, all sorts of stories. I called the manufacturer and they shipped it to me directly. So if that doesn't work with certain teat, you can try GAF.
Well, I mean, there's three there that are available that seem less high contrast.
Yeah, well, you've got, they've got shadow gray. You say, you say it's going to turn gray anyhow.
Yeah, this will turn.
So go, go with sha, go with shadow gray.
That's going to turn.
Seems like everybody will be happy, right?
I wish I could.
They're just going to get what they're going to end up with sooner.
Yeah, that's right.
It'll be the real thing, yeah.
Is that correct English?
At this time of the discussion.
I think I got a few verbs mixed up. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of what staff, that's why staff is pointing that, this out to us. And I appreciate that, so I just, I would make a recommendation that we, I don't know exactly what that resolution said, but I think that the applicant worked with staff to select another color. And that gives you the option if they don't want to go, I don't want to specify a color.
Yeah, right.
We're basically just saying, no charcoal black, but you've got a bunch of other colors here, which I think still gives you the, you know, like I said, the, you know, the shadow gray may be a good selection, you know?
Would you guys, would you guys agree to that shadow gray? There's going to be.
Well, we can specify it if you want. I just am giving you, by, giving you the option work with staff, you can, you can have shadow gray or any of these other ones. We're just, we're just, go ahead.
If I could, I do believe that, that shadow gray is one that this commission has talked about in the past as a, as a no-no.
That we didn't like?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Those are the two.
You've really been keeping track.
Well.
Oh, so we don't like black or shadow gray?
Right. Correct.
We want like a, okay.
We, the, the concept of the roofing is that it should, it should mimic the appropriate style of roof for the structure, which is wood shingles or something, and so some sort of shake. And so the color should mimic wood or some sort of natural material.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I don't know, he's got this one sketch, stressed out, so I don't know what the top one is. That one looks the most to mimic wood.
Yeah, that one is.
Or there's autumn blend.
Completely not getting produced.
That's not being produced?
That's why they're Xed out completely.
So what about autumn blend?
It would have to be autumn blend because what we're, what we're talking about is, that's our last option.
It's autumn blend.
Mr. Chair, I could suggest perhaps if the commission's open to it, that, you know, autumn blend is a for sure approval or if the applicant wants to work, because the condition as it's written, you know, they can work with staff to find another color. I don't know if this is the only brand that you guys install.
Yeah, not to mention, if they're going to paint, shouldn't it be one cohesive concept? I mean.
The reason why we, we actually presented this material is, is yes, this is the, this is the manufacturer that we work with. We offer a long-term warranty with this manufacturer.
Makes sense, that's why I asked.
If I present a gas material, you know, that, that puts me in a different ring.
Right. You've got some, you've got some colors here that you can, that, that will be supported. So I think, I think we should put in a motion that you work with staff to select the color which is supported by our, this is for the, but the business, the business, commercial design guidelines.
I want to ask, I want to ask that you guys, that, that you guys are aware that there is buildings in that area and just around town with the same black material. And I'm sorry, I'm.
No, we understand, but, but we make our decisions on each individual project.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to point out our inconsistencies, go right ahead.
It's a little late and I'm trying to find here.
Get out of it. All right. Okay, so.
I'll take that.
Yeah, that's yours, that's yours, okay. So we have a motion and what does it say, composite? Prior to recent, the applicant shall submit a new proposal. So, so the, I think the special condition as written can stand, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I will propose, we make a motion, yeah, the motion as per staff.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thanks guys. Thanks for hanging out on there.
Yeah, they were here the whole time?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh. You guys are real troopers.
We're supporting a lot of it and drives it.
Okay, I guess that, that concludes the public hearings and brings us to our director's report.
Yeah, really quickly, just to let you know, the search continues for my replacement. We have, we have a recruitment open, ongoing, hopeful to get somebody before the end of the year. And then I mentioned, I grabbed Commissioner Delves on the way out, so tonight was his last planning commission.
That was his last.
Yeah, he gets, he gets seated on December 9th. I had planned on giving him a little bit of grief tonight if he's going to stick around, but. but what I asked him to do and what the plan was, is once he's officially no longer a planning commissioner, I was going to ask him to come back for the start of our next planning commission as a city council member. We can recognize him, give him a little plaque or something and thank him for his service.
Yeah, I was, I was worried, I was kind of feeling like I should make an announcement tonight, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. We'll do that the next one. You and I can, you and I can partner on some sort of resolution or something.
And thank him for his service.
Can we roast him?
Yes. The answer is yes. Yes, we can.
Well, you can lightly roast him.